Good morning, ladies and gentlemen. Our quorum being present, the meeting will come to order. I'd like to ask you all if you could please rise. To commemorate the 275th anniversary of the town of Wilmington, the Wilmington Minutemen will present the colors for the pledge of allegiance. The Wilmington Minutemen. If you could all join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. And if you could remain standing and please observe a moment of silence for those that have passed away in the past year, especially those that have served the town of Wilmington, namely Jesse Anderson, Robert Boucher, Lorraine Brazina, Lillian Buckley, John Campbell, Robert Kavanaugh, David Elfman, William Harrison, Joseph Lundergan, Bruce McDonald, Keith Marshall, Walter Muse, Robert Pacheco, Paul Rose, Frederick Stewart, Barbara White. And especially for those American servicemen and women that have given their lives in Iraq, Afghanistan, and around the world in service to our nation and in hopes that those still serving overseas will return home safely and soon. Thank you. And if you could please still remain standing as the Minutemen return the colors to the podium. Thank you. Thank you. Please be seated. And thank you to the Wilmington Minutemen for that presentation. Thank you, gentlemen. Good morning. Just a few notes before we get started with the warrant. Articles one through nine will be taken up in order as part of the bylaw of the town of Wilmington and as part of the budget. Articles 10 through 33 will be drawn in random selection. On pages 31 through 38, you can see the various maps related to the special articles in your booklet. And everyone should have a pink booklet. If you don't, you can get one out in the foyer. Reminder that motions and/or amendments having to do with expenditures of money or the amendment of any bylaw must be presented to me in writing and signed. And those articles, for those that are presenting those articles, are 3 through 12, 14, 16, 18 through 23, 32, and 33. So if you plan on presenting those articles or making an amendment to those articles, you need to do so in writing. If you wish to speak, I'd ask that you please go to one of the microphones, and I will call on you once you're at the microphone. And I'd like to ask you all if you could please turn off your cellphones and your beepers or at least turn them to silent. Non-voters must have stickers and be seated in the non-voter section in the last few rows of this side of the gymnasium. Reminder that this is a school building and there is no smoking on school grounds. So the closest smoking area is the town common. I'd like to thank the tellers in advance for their help today and WCTV for televising the broadcast. Once again, thank you to them and thank you to the tellers for the hard work that they put in at town meeting. And just a reminder as well, there was a question this week that was brought up to me about the moderator. Actually, someone had stated that the moderator had taken a vote on a question that had come before town meeting at a previous meeting. And I want to just make perfectly clear to everyone that the moderator does not vote on articles at town meeting. Has not, does not, and will not ever. It is my job to be impartial for every single vote, and I hope I have done that over the past 13 years. And if anyone feels as though I voted, then there is obviously a misunderstanding because I have never taken a vote at a town meeting. If you would turn to page three in your booklet. "Greetings, in the name of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts and in the manner prescribed in the bylaws of said town, you are hereby directed to notify and warn the inhabitants of the town qualified to vote in town affairs, to meet and assemble at the West Intermediate School, precincts one and two, Wywood School Precincts three and four, and the Town Hall Auditorium, precincts five and six, Saturday the 16th of April, A.D. 2005, at 9:45 o'clock in the forenoon. The polls to be opened at 10:00 a.m. and shall be closed at 8:00 p.m. for the election of town officers." Mr. McCoy.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. And before I read that, I want to say, Jimmy, as a citizen, I think you do a great job as town moderator, and I think you're one of the best town moderates we ever had. And I'd just like to give him a great round of applause.
Thank you, Mr. McCoy.
I move that the town, I move that the moderator dispense with further reading of the warrant and take up and make reference to each article by number.
Is there a second? Motion's made and seconded. Discussion? Those in favor say aye. Those opposed say no. Voted. We're on Article number one. "To bring in your votes on one ballot respectively for the following named offices to wit: two selectmen for the term of three years, two members of the school committee for the term of three years, and one member of the housing authority for the term of five years." And ladies and gentlemen, it's my pleasure and honor to introduce to you those candidates who you elected to those offices last week. To the Wilmington Housing Authority, Ms. Dot Butler. To the Wilmington School Committee, Ms. Teresa Bonapane. To the Wilmington School Committee, Ms. Marilyn Lamson. Both of those ladies were reelected to their offices. Also reelected to the Wilmington Board of Selectmen, Mr. Raymond Lepore. And reelected to the Wilmington Board of Selectmen, the current chairman, Mr. Michael McCoy. I would like to thank all of those that participated in last week's election. Thank you. You are also hereby and further required and directed to notify and warn the said inhabitants of the town of Wilmington who are qualified to vote on elections and town affairs therein, to assemble subsequently and meet in the town meeting at the high school gymnasium, Church Street, in said town of Wilmington on Saturday the 23rd day of April, A.D. 2005, at 10:30 a.m., then and there to act on the following articles. And that first article we will act upon is Article number two. Is there a motion, Mr. Kira?
Mr. Moderator, I move to take no action.
Is there a second? Motion's made and seconded. To take no action? Discussion? Those in favor say aye. Those opposed say no. Voted. We're on Article number three. "To see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate, transfer from available funds, or borrow pursuant to any applicable statute, a sum of money for the purpose of paying unpaid bills of previous years or do anything in relation thereto." Mr. Kira.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the article not be adopted.
Is there a second? Motion's made and seconded. Motion is to not adopt. Those in favor say aye. Those opposed say no. Voted. Article number four. "To see if the town will vote to authorize the treasurer-collector with the approval of the selectmen to enter into an agreement under the provisions of Chapter 44, Section 53F of the Massachusetts General Laws with one or more banks doing business in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts during fiscal year 2005 and for a term not to exceed three years, which will permit the town of Wilmington to maintain funds on deposit with such institutions in return for said institutions providing banking services or do anything in relation thereto." Mr. McCoy.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I move that the treasurer-collector, with the approval of the selectmen, be hereby authorized to enter into an agreement under the provisions of Chapter 44, Section 53F of the Massachusetts General Laws with one or more banks doing business in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts during fiscal year 2006 and for a term not to exceed three years, which will permit the town of Wilmington to maintain funds on deposits with such institutions in return for said institutions providing banking services.
Is there a second? Motion's made and seconded. Finance Committee recommendation? Is approval? Ready for the vote? Those in favor say aye. Those opposed say no. Voted. We're on Article number five. "To see how much money the town will appropriate for the expenses of the town and the salaries of several town offices and departments and to determine how the same shall be raised whether by taxation, transfer from available funds or otherwise or do anything in relation thereto." Mr. Dougherty.
I move that the several in respect of sums as recommended and presented by the Finance Committee be raised from the fiscal year '06 tax levy and other general revenues of the town or by transfer from available funds as may be recommended by the Finance Committee and appropriated for the purpose set forth in Article number five. Each department's budget to be taken up and voted on in order that they appear, subject to amendment, and each department's budget not to be open for reconsideration until the entire budget is voted.
Is there a second? Motion's made and seconded. Finance Committee recommendation? Is approval? Discussion? What we're voting on, ladies and gentlemen, is just to take up the budget by department as it's contained in the next several pages. Everybody clear on what we're voting on? Those in favor say aye. Those opposed say no. Voted. It is customary at this time that I call on the chairman of the Finance Committee just for a few quick comments on the budget process. And I'd like to introduce to you the chairman of the Finance Committee, Mr. John Dougherty.
Good morning. Over the past few months, the Finance Committee has reviewed the budget with the town manager, the department heads, the superintendent of the Wilmington Schools and the superintendent of the Shawshank Tech and have brought forth this recommendation to today's body. Hopefully, you'll take our recommendations. I'd also like to thank the town manager and the superintendents for their help in developing this budget. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Dougherty. I'd like to thank Mr. Dougherty and the Finance Committee. I think they deserve a round of applause for the time that they put in each year putting this budget together. Thank you. Ladies and gentlemen. We're on page number four in your booklet, ladies and gentlemen. And we will be voting on the column that says "Finance Committee Recommends." And we'll be taking them up by department. So the first vote we'll take will be selectmen. Legislative, $17,890. Everybody with me? Anybody have a question before we get started? We're ready to go. If you wish to speak or if you have a question, jump right up. This has a tendency to go quickly. So I want to make sure if you have a question or a comment, that you get recognized. Thank you. Selectmen, legislative, $17,890. Discussion? Those in favor say aye. Those opposed say no. Voted. Selectmen Elections, $14,946. Discussion? Those in favor say aye. Those opposed say no. Voted. Registrars of Voters, $7,075. Discussion? Those in favor say aye. Those opposed say no. Voted. Finance Committee, $8,955. Discussion? Those in favor say aye. Those opposed say no. Voted. Town Manager, $449,201. Discussion? Those in favor say aye. Those opposed say no. Voted. Town Accountant, $279,370. Discussion? Those in favor say aye. Those opposed say no. Voted. Treasurer Collector, $242,758. Discussion? Those in favor say aye. Those opposed say no. Voted. Town Clerk, $168,457. Discussion? Those in favor say aye. Those opposed say no. Voted. Board of Assessors, $253,143. Discussion? Those in favor say aye. Those opposed say no. Voted. Town Council, $150,000. Discussion? Those in favor say aye. Those opposed say no. Voted. Permanent Building Committee, $450. Discussion? Those in favor say aye. Those opposed say no. Voted. Public Safety Police, $3,393,350. Discussion? Those in favor say aye. Those opposed say no. Voted. Fire, $2,743,438. Mr. McDonald, I see you standing there.
Mr. Stewart, I was just wondering if you could tell us how much it's costing the town, how much it's costing the taxpayers to not have certified personnel such as paramedics. And the reason why I bring this up, after having some extensive conversations with some paramedics, it's my understanding that there are medical emergencies where medication is needed to save lives and an EMT is not certified to administer that medication. And it's my understanding it's only qualified paramedics that can administer medication. Just wondering how much it's costing the taxpayers to not have these guys properly certified.
So you're asking how much do we pay those outside services for that service, Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Is that your question? Mr. Kira?
We don't. We do have advanced life support services that are located right in town and they are paid by the insurance providers. So in fact, I believe our firefighters are amazingly competent and that they are able and equipped to handle a wide range of incidences and situations that result from emergencies. And at the same time, the town has the opportunity to utilize the advanced life system, support system that is in town thanks to Chief Stewart. And so in answer to your question, it's not costing us anything for the ALS support.
Further discussion? You have another question, Mr. McDonald?
Yeah, I have several. What's perplexing to me is the taxpayers are being asked to fund $2.7 million and EMTs are $112,000. And in my mind, it would exemplify leadership if there were some training programs so that these EMTs would be properly certified and given the education so that they can become paramedics. And Mr. Kira, you mentioned that it doesn't cost anybody anything. What do people do who don't have insurance? They're paying taxes to fund a department and if they don't have insurance, they're basically being charged twice for a service that's inadequate.
Mr. Kira?
Yes, I'm not sure where you've got your figure, Mr. McDonald, but I would point out that under the line item, EMT and incentive pay, the number is $11,225, not $111,000. All of the firefighters in the town of Wilmington are required to be EMTs. In fact, in a collective bargaining agreement several years ago, maybe 10 years ago now or longer, we agreed to put the stipend that they were receiving as EMTs into their regular salary. So there no longer is a stipend specifically for EMTs for firefighters, with the exception of the chief. The chief, because he's not a part of the collective bargaining unit and was also required to have that and had already had it before, was essentially grandfathered in and receives a very small portion of that, a couple of thousand dollars, I think, of that EMT and incentive pay. It's primarily that $11,000 is primarily incentive pay and it is a result of a few of the firefighters, again, through a collective bargaining agreement that has been in force for a while before I got here, that enables the town to pay a small stipend to firefighters who have advanced training by college or university in the fire sciences and they get a stipend of sorts. Most of them are in the $500 area. I believe it goes up as high as $2,000 for the highest degree. So that's what that is. I don't want anybody to believe that we're spending $111,000 separately for EMTs. The line item is $11,225, 80% of which or more is for the college incentive. And in fact, all of our firefighters must be EMTs.
Mr. Dougherty? Mr. McDonald, you have 30 seconds.
Yeah, I just want to explain where I got the figure of $112,000. You see where it says paid holidays? Every day that goes by that there's not certified personnel and no leadership in a department, I consider to be a paid holiday. And I would suggest that there be no pay raises for this department. And I think that if you take a look at what your bills would be if you had to call an ambulance, it would pretty much give you confidence to vote that way. Thank you.
Further discussion? It's up to back, is Mr. Costas?
Steve Costas, 120 Faulkner Ave. I'm quite amazed how Mr. McDonald would speak about the fire department with their great services that they provide to the community. And we can thank the fire department for the great work of a restaurant of 65 years and the great medical staff. And I'm looking at the calls. The calls have gone up quite a bit over the last year. And that's because of calls out. Now, I've never, and I have four elderly people in my neighborhood, never have not seen the paramedic show up in less than five minutes. They've been there within five minutes of the call, if it's a heart attack, if it's something where they need medication. So I don't think that the fire department needs to go and get certified in paramedics. I think that the first priority of the fire department is that we need to hire more staff eventually. And we should vote for raises because these guys are doing more than another town. Thank you.
Ready for the vote? We're on Fire Department, $2,743,438. Those in favor say aye. Those opposed say no. Voted. 196 to one. Public Safety Central Dispatch, $442,220. Discussion? Those in favor say aye. Those opposed say no. Voted. We're on page number six, ladies and gentlemen. Animal Control, $34,336. Discussion? Those in favor say aye. Those opposed say no. Voted. Public Works. We're voting on the entire Public Works budget of $5,038,643. Discussion? Mr. Dougherty.
I move that the sum of $5,038,33... $5,038,643 be appropriated for the Department of Public Works and to meet this appropriation, $35,000 is to be transferred from the sale of cemetery lots account and the sum of $5,000 is to be transferred from the interest cemetery trust funds and that the both amounts be applied to the line item, personal services cemetery, full-time, and that the balance of $4,998,643 be raised by the fiscal year '06 tax levy and other general revenues of the town.
Is there a second? Motion's made and seconded. We're voting on $5,038,643 for Public Works, of which $40,000 comes from available funds. Discussion? Those in... Oh, I'm sorry, sir. Yes.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Stewart. Dan Woodbury, 20 Central Street. I was in particular looking at ice and snow removal in the budget. We have two line items for ice and snow removal. One is for the snow and ice extra help in overtime. And we also have the snow and ice sand insulting, which approximately is a little less than $300,000. This year, I believe that we had spent in excess of $750,000 for ice and sand removal. Of that as well, we have to remove sand now. And I don't believe, if I'm mistaken, let me know, that the sand used to be brought down to the recycling center and put there. But I believe we've closed that recycling center and we can no longer bring that sand there. And because it is considered hazardous, we have to also pay to bring this someplace else. So I'm just wondering if we severely miscalculated our amounts for our sanding and snow removal in this area. Thank you.
Mr. Kira?
There are actually five line items, not three, that refer to snow and ice removal. And what we have done is budgeted for the normal year. I'm confident that the superintendent has provided enough funds in there for the normal year. Unfortunately, this year was anything but normal. And as you will see in a transfer article later on, I wish the $750,000 figure that Mr. Woodbury indicated was in fact true and that probably was the number back in the middle of March. It ended up costing the town about $866,000 or thereabouts to remove snow this year. We had literally double or more than the amounts that we normally have in terms of the number of times going out and the accumulation of snow. So it was a very difficult summer. What's been budgeted this year is basically what has been budgeted in the past with an inflation figure to account for the rise in cost for road salt and sand and also to account for some of the additional costs that we expect for salaries.
Further discussion? Mr. Woodbury?
Oh, the second part of the question was, where are we bringing the sand now that we're cleaning up?
Mr. Onisite? Question is, where is the sand going once we remove it from the streets?
Mr. Woodbury is correct. We do have to dispose of that sand. It's not hazardous, but it is a solid waste that has to be properly disposed of. And right now, we're bringing that material up to a licensed landfill in Newburyport, Massachusetts.
Thank you. Further discussion? We're ready for the vote. We're on $5,038,643, of which $40,000 comes from available funds for the Public Works Department. Yes, sir?
Larry Foley, 2 Calmoneck. The sand that is mentioned, is that a recyclable item?
Is the sand recyclable?
Yes.
Mr. Onisite?
For the most part, it's not. We can use some of the sand that's from residential areas and recycle it, reuse it. But that's a very small portion of the total amount of sand that we have to collect and dispose of.
Further discussion? We're ready for the vote. $5,038,643, of which $40,000 comes from available funds on Public Works Department. Those in favor say aye. Those opposed say no. Voted. We're on Community Development, Board of Health, $272,642. Discussion? Those in favor say aye. Those opposed say no. Voted. Sealer of Weights and Measures, $5,140. Discussion? Those in favor say aye. Those opposed say no. Voted. Planning and Conservation, $250,598. Discussion? Those in favor say aye. Those opposed say no. Voted. A Building Inspector, Board of Appeals, $171,633. Discussion? Those in favor say aye. Those opposed say no. Voted. Public Buildings, $3,255,590. Discussion? Those in favor say aye. Those opposed say no. Voted. We're on Human Services on page eight. Veterans Aid and Benefits, $24,734. Discussion? Those in favor say aye. Those opposed say no. Voted. Library, $761,772. Discussion? Those in favor say aye. Those opposed say no. Voted. Recreation, $105,506. Discussion? Those in favor say aye. Those opposed say no. Voted. Elderly Services, $172,498. Discussion? Those in favor say aye. Those opposed say no. Voted. Historical Commission, $18,650. Historical Commission, $18,650. Discussion. Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. Voted. Commissioner on Disabilities, $500. Discussion. Yes, ma'am.
I have a question. My name is Marion Amber. I'm Burlington Ave. Why is there no commissioner on the disabilities?
Why is there no... I couldn't hear you. I mean, why is there no...
Why is there no commissioner for disabilities?
Commissioner?
Yes.
There's a commission on disabilities. The commissioner role, we're not required to have a commissioner. What we're required to have is folks that are assigned to ADA responsibilities, and we do have that both through Mr. Lassard as the public building superintendent and Mr. Hall as the assistant town manager.
I thought that in the ADA, there was a requirement that every town, city have an ADA commissioner.
An ADA...
Full-time.
Oh, no, not full-time, but we have full-time employees that take that responsibility.
Well, then, why are there non-compliant parking lots? And beyond that, it's rather hard to get into a business to determine whether or not they're compliant with the ADA and CMR.
I would, I would suggest that if you are aware of any situations where you believe a property owner or the town is not compliant with any of the ADA requirements, that you bring that to my attention, and we will get that to the proper authorities, and we will take the appropriate action.
Mr. Cire, it seems to me that two or three years ago, I brought to your attention at the town halls, parking lot was non-compliant. The counters in every room is not compliant. The bathroom that is supposed to be handicapped accessible is not compliant. The parking lot right here at the high school is not compliant. I don't believe that there is one parking lot, whether it's old or new, been remodeled or just freshly built, like down on Lowell Street. There's two. Parking lots are non-compliant.
Certainly will check that, but I, I believe that the parking that we have certainly at the high school is adequate to handle all of the, any of the handicapped students or faculty or visitors that we have.
No, it is not, Mr. Cire.
Okay, excuse me. Let him finish. Thank you.
But I would be happy to have that looked at, to talk to the school officials, to talk to Mr. Hall and Mr. Lassard, who have responsibilities in that area, to talk to Mr. Paray, the building inspector, and also to consult with you. If you have, have something specific, you're welcome to bring it to our attention. I, I think at the town hall, we have spaces out front that are very rarely used, but they are, they are there for the benefit of any of the handicapped with regard to parking. We certainly can look at some of your concerns with regard to, to access, but if anybody has a problem, we'd be more than happy to address it.
According to CMR and CFR both, handicapped spots are supposed to be permanently fixed signage. There is special requirements for how wide they can be, and there also has to be an access area between parking spaces that can be shared so that a person can pull into a spot and transfer from their vehicle to a wheelchair. The parking spaces right here at the high school do not have that. There are two spaces over right behind the Roman House. If you're in the passenger seat and someone else is driving into either of those spots, how are you going to get a wheelchair in between them? You can't. Plain and simple, you can't. The town hall is the same way. You can't. The curb cuts are not compliant. Even our brand-new town station, I would like to see you go down there in a wheelchair and get up that ramp on your own. You can't.
Fifteen seconds, ma'am.
So I'd like to see this commission get off there, but whoever is supposed to be doing these compliances, write-offs, sign-offs, I don't think they should have a pay raise if they're not doing their job.
Time's up, ma'am. Thank you.
Thank you.
Further discussion? We're on Commission on Disabilities, $500. Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. Voted. We're on Schools. Wilmington School Department, $24,854,000. Discussion. Yes, ma'am.
Tracy McNeil, Sixth Brand Avenue.
Are we also discussing pages nine and 10? I mean, this would be encompassing of that as well, wouldn't it?
The discussion, the, we vote today, ladies and gentlemen, on a bottom-line number. The school department puts before you pages nine and 10 for your informational purposes, but we do not vote, since the school department through state statute has bottom-line autonomy, we do not vote by budget within the school department. It is the one number. You're welcome to ask a question of the school department pertaining to those, but we vote the one number.
Thank you. That's just fine with me. I do have a question, and the town manager the other day was also kind enough to do some explaining for me, but perhaps he could reiterate again, as well as anybody else who could put some information forward about the number I see. It's on page 10. Number four, tuitions for special education. If you notice, from the FY04 to FY05, it goes down about $300,000. The FY06 budget is about $1,695. It's down by 25.6 percent. This is a scary number to me, and I would, I would like the town manager again to reiterate what he told me because it did make me feel quite a bit better about services being provided to the special needs community. For someone like myself, who has a son that's in this program, who's doing extremely well, I don't want to see his services cut, and I guess I'll just turn the floor over to anybody who can provide any information about that.
Mr. Cire or Mr. McCalliffe?
I just explained briefly what I was telling Mrs. McNeil, and then Mr. McCalliffe certainly can elaborate because he's the expert on this, but we have something called circuit breaker funding, really, that allowed us to receive an increase in special education reimbursement funds. And as a result of having those funds available, we did not necessarily have to appropriate into this fiscal year 2006 budget. If the, if the body wants to understand how that whole process works, the superintendent of schools is here, and I know that he can ably explain it, but Mrs. McNeil is correct. The, the level of services is not in any way being diminished. It's just that there are funds available outside of the, outside of this particular appropriation that enable us to ask for this dollar amount. But I'm sure that Mr. McCalliffe can explain it and correct me if I've said anything that's, that's not correct. I'm eminently correctable, believe me.
I'd like to ask the body, do you recognize Mr. McCalliffe, the superintendent?
Absolutely. Mr. McCalliffe.
Thank you, Mrs. Duffy. Mr. Moderator. And thank you, Mrs. McNeil, for, for bringing our attention to that. There is, I guess, bad news and good news regarding state funding for, for education. The bad news, for those of you who aren't aware, is that since 2001, state funding via Chapter 70, which is school reimbursement that comes, local aid for education that comes from the state, has decreased for Wilmington by about 20 percent. On the other side, however, the good news is that the state legislature has fully implemented a law that was passed in 2002 called the Special Education Reimbursement Law. It's actually an expansion of a previous law that was in place. It's known as the Circuit Breaker Reimbursement Law. And what you see in your budget books is a reflection of the full implementation of that law. For last year, FY05, or the current year, we anticipated approximately $475,000 in additional state aid that will come to the schools to pay for these special education tuitions. This year, or, or next year, fiscal year '06, we expect an additional $600,000 for a total special education reimbursement amount of $1,075,000. So what the line item reflects is an offset, if you will. Those funds are available funds. The funds come from the state, are put in a special account, and we pay for those tuitions through that account. So that's why you see the reduction.
Is there any way in the future, if, if we're going to be getting, for example, funding from another source, can that be any way shown in this booklet so somebody like me doesn't pick it up and go, what's going on? And, and wondering if I'm going to need to utilize other avenues and resources to make sure that my child gets the needs that he has for his education?
Sure, and I think, oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Moderator.
Absolutely.
I think that's a reasonable question. The school committee and myself will certainly work with the finance committee and the town, town manager's office to look at how the information is published in the warrant. But in addition to that, and, and we'd be happy to provide that to you, we do have copies of the school committee's line item budget, and we will provide that for you. That's not a problem at all. And in the line item budget, you will actually see, by line item, the expenses for special education, and you'll also be able to see the $1,075,000 offset that is actually applied to that line.
Thank you very much, Mr. McCalliffe. I just want to make a comment about the schools in general and some of the feedback that I've been getting for the past few months because it had come up in past discussions about perhaps a need for a new high school. And I've spoken with folks in just conversations, not trying to start a movement, but I have to tell you that the feedback that I'm not only getting back from parents who have students in this community, but from other communities, that we are doing extremely well by our student body. I have people who tell me that the Wilmington honors program is one of the toughest honors programs around, and I get feedback from friends of mine who live in Burlington and in Woburn and in Lexington for things like that, which is also comforting to me because I have another child who's going to be needing that challenge in the future. And, and people who've also told me, because I've thought perhaps maybe, you know, if the education doesn't stay up to snuff, am I going to have to move my kids into private school? What am I going to do? But I feel very comfortable not having to do that at all. I, you know, it seems like, you know, everything's right on. My kids are thriving. The feedback is good. I've gotten feedback from other parents who've put their kids in Catholic school thinking that's the way to go, and they said, no, they haven't been as challenged as much as they've moved in here. I had a friend of mine who's a teacher in Cambridge...
You have 15 seconds, Ms. McNeil.
Thank you. Who ran into a girl who moved from Cambridge to Wilmington, a girl who wasn't doing well in the Cambridge school system but is thriving here. So I just want to leave you with that. I think you're all doing a wonderful job, and I thank you again very much, and thank you. That's it.
Thank you. Just so, just so everyone is aware, you've had me give, heard me give three people a time. Last year at the annual town meeting, the bylaws were changed as to how long each speaker can speak before town meeting. So everyone has five minutes. So before they had 10, last year, the town meeting chose to reduce that to five minutes. So if everyone be aware of that when they're speaking. Further discussion? Mr. Costas.
Steve Costas, 120 Faulkner Ave. Former special needs student, and I'm not too bought on this budget. I mean, we have a decrease in the out-of-town tuitions, and then we have an increase in salaries for this year for the special needs staff. No matter which way you look at it, I was shipped out of town by the school department due to the fact that there was a challenge, there was a, in 1994, my mother actually had to go in front of the Board of Education for the Commonwealth of Massachusetts to force the school committee to send me out of town because they could not give proper education. Even today, the special needs department is not up to par. That's why we're paying so much money for so many other kids. Now, look at me. I'm not in a wheelchair. I don't have crutches. I have a learning disability. Not that severe, but enough, severe enough that they had to ship me away from my friends. We have a decrease. There are programs out there that are excelling in the special needs areas. I'm actually an advocate for us special needs children. I've spoken very highly of special needs in other communities. But it seems to me that every time we hit town meeting floor, and the question always comes up, why, why is this? Why is that? Why is this? Why is that? Is there a number of how many kids are severely disabled that we're sending out of town, and how many kids are, just have a learning disability or reading disability in this school department or the special, better yet, the special education department can't provide the right sources, but we're paying in a base salary, of course, to $54,000 a year for teachers? And we have a dropout rating in the TAPS program. Last time I checked, there were three kids that I know of that dropped out of the program. I mean, we're talking about a special ed program that's funded by this community, and kids dropping out of school. I mean, there were avenues that I brought in front of the special education director, and there was no, absolutely no thought about it. There's been proven studies on behavioral children, and I've studied this, that you cannot suspend a behavioral child. You have to come up with a plan of how this child's not going to be act up in school. Because all those kids are going to look for is the front door of the school to get suspended. I brought that up in front of the former, Mr. Fedetta at one time, and then his predecessor, I brought it up to her. And I feel that that program's being funded with teachers that are not qualified enough for behavioral education, and then they turn around and all they're doing is sending it to the vice principal's office, and these kids are able to get off scotch free. This is what goes on behind the scenes in the school department. As much as the regular education department, I've studied special ed in this town, there is not a kid that can reach this high school with a severe disability, with a severe learning disability that is actually going to graduate before the age of 22. State law clearly states, Chapter 766 of Mass General Law, it clearly states, you have to educate a special needs child with the core evaluation to the age of 22. I will bring this to your attention. Whoever makes the decision is this school department, if it is the superintendent or the school committee who appoints or hires the superintendent of schools. In 1997, I was forced out of school because I wanted to go through a pomp and circumstance, not receive my diploma. These are things that go on. This is how they push kids out the door, special education. School committee says, go see the superintendent. Superintendent's, go, go see the principal. Fairness of the evaluation was is that I was supposed to be provided something before I left the school in 1994, and to come back, go through the pomp and circumstance and go through another program. It never happened. Money is being spent. I'd like to see how many kids in this town have dropped out of that TAPS program to date. I at least know three kids, and the problem was is they were tired of learning the same old stuff. Education is a valuable tool. Everybody looks at me and says, he can't be special ed, people I work with. All right? I went to a program. It cost a lot of money for this town to send me to that program. I'm well-educated in special needs law, and this town is not providing the right special education for these children. Thank you.
Further discussion on the school budget?
Mr. Moderator.
Mr. McCoy.
You know, I really didn't think I'd be talking on this subject. I've got a son in special ed, and I want to say they do a great job in this community. Our services are second to none, and I'm proud of the special ed in this community, and I resent those comments that were made earlier. Thank you.
Mr. McDonald.
Yes, I was just wondering if the superintendent can tell us if there are any jobs being cut or services being cut, along with the cut in the funding for the department.
Mr. McCalliffe?
Mr. Moderator, there are no positions being cut under this budget.
Thank you.
Further discussion? We're ready for the vote. We're on Wilmington School Department, $24,854,000. Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. Voted. Shawshing Valley Regional Vocational Technical High School District, $3,428,807. Discussion. Mr. Doherty.
I move that the sum of $3,428,807 be appropriated for the Shawshing Valley Regional Vocational Technical High School District, and to meet this appropriation, $300,062 be transferred from the Ovale Reserve Fund, and that the remaining balance of $3,128,745 be raised from the fiscal year '06 tax levy and other general revenues of the town.
Is there a second? Is there a second?
There's a second.
Motion's made and seconded. Discussion. Shawshing Valley Regional Vocational Technical High School District, $3,428,807, of which $300,062 comes from available funds. Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. Voted. Voted. If you could turn to page 11 in your booklet, ladies and gentlemen. We're on maturing debt and interest, $4,497,193. Discussion, Mr. Doherty.
I move that the sum of $4,497,193 be appropriated for maturing debt and interest, and to meet this appropriation, $126,994 be transferred from available funds, free cash, and be applied to the line item, maturing debt and interest, schools, and that the sum of $260,500 be raised by transfer from available funds, free cash, and be applied to the line item, maturing debt, interest, public safety, and that the balance of $4,109,699 be raised from the fiscal year '06 tax levy and other general revenues of the town.
Is there a second? Motion's made and seconded. Discussion. We're on maturing debt and interest, $4,497,193, of which $387,494 comes from available funds. Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. Voted. Unclassified and reserve, $7,562,428. Discussion, Mr. Doherty.
I move that the sum of $7,562,428 be appropriated for unclassified and reserve, of which the sum of $79,649 be transferred from the water department available funds and be applied to the unclassified and reserve insurance account, and that the sum of $209,139 be transferred from the water department available funds, and that that sum of $244,506 be transferred from available funds, free cash, the total of which $453,645 be applied to the unclassified and reserve employee life and health insurance account, and that the sum of $14,141 be transferred from the water department available funds and be applied to the unclassified and reserve Medicare employees contribution account, and the remaining balance of $7,14,993 be raised from the fiscal year '06 tax levy and other general revenues of the town.
Is there a second? Motion's made and seconded. Discussion.
Yes, I just want to point out-
Excuse me?
Mr. McDonald.
This is the unclassified and reserve section, Mr. Stewart?
Yes, that's correct.
I just want to point out to some people, one of the line items here, specifically the lady here who is concerned about funding and oversight for special ADA compliance, and also Mrs. McNeil and Mr. Costas, as well as everybody else. You might want to take a look at the line item that says ambulance billing, $25,000, ladies and gentlemen, okay? One thing you might want to consider is, why are we spending this money? I'm gonna tell you why. Because guys are too lazy, they're sleeping and watching TV.
Mr. McDonald, Mr. McDonald, you're out of order, Mr. McDonald, as usual.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Further discussion? Yes, sir.
John Goggan, 28 Indian Road. And I just had a question about the difference between the local transportation training conference line and out-of-state travel. Why are there two separate line items? And why, you know, if we had a good, if there was a good training conference in New Hampshire, why would that, you know, why wouldn't these both be in the same line item?
Mr. Kira.
Probably no good reason, John. It's just a, something that's carried on for years, perhaps back 25 or 30 years ago when the line was established, the members of the finance committee wanted to draw a distinction between a conference that took place out of state as opposed to one that takes place in-house. No other reason than that.
Would it, is it something that we could combine into one line item at this point, or?
Well, I wouldn't combine, we could certainly look to do that next year. We'll talk to the finance committee, so that when the presentation comes next year, we can have one, one particular line item.
All right, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Further discussion? Yes, sir.
Daryl Sins about 10 Harrell Ave. Just a show of hands, who wants the fire department-
Whoa, 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 sir, excuse me, sir, we don't take votes.
Okay, okay. I just want to know, who would possibly want the fire department to show up at their house all groggy and tired because they couldn't sleep? It's life-saving. I want somebody well-rested at my house to save my life. I don't want somebody falling asleep driving the ambulance on the way to the hospital with me. Thank you.
Further discussion? We're ready for the vote. We're on unclassified and reserve, $7,562,428, of which $547,435 comes from available funds. Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no.
No.
Voted. Statutory charges, ladies and gentlemen, we only, were required by the Department of Revenue to vote on the MWRA sewer assessment charge. That's the only one we'll be voting on, which is $1,891,584. Discussion. Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. Voted. Ladies and gentlemen, that concludes the line item portion of our budget. We're now on Article Number Six. Which can be found on page 13 in your booklet. To see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate transfer from available funds or borrow pursuant to any applicable statute, a sum of money for the purchase of new and/or replacement capital equipment, including but not limited to the following items, and further to authorize a sale, trade-in, conveyance, or other disposition of any equipment being so replaced. Such funds to be spent by the town department so indicated with the approval of the town manager, and to the extent set forth in Chapter 592 of the Acts of 1950, the Board of Selectmen is follows. Police department, purchase of four replacement police cruisers or do anything in relation thereto. Mr. West.
Good morning, Mr. Moderator. I move that $104,000 be transferred from available funds, free cash, to be spent by the town manager for the purchase of four replacement police cruisers for the police department, and further, the sale, trade-in, or other disposition of any said replacement vehicles is hereby authorized.
Is there a second? Motion's made and seconded. Finance committee recommendation is approval. Discussion.
Just wondering how much-
Mr. McDonald?
Yeah. How much money are each of these cars costing us, and how many miles per gallon are we getting with them?
Mr. Kira, do you-
They cost 26, we estimate that the cost would be $26,000 each. I don't know what the miles per gallon is. If, Mr. Moderator, Mr. Onisite may know that, or?
Mr. Onisite?
The cruisers that we've been purchasing are high-performance Crown Vics, not real great on gas mileage, probably anywhere from about 15 to 17 miles per gallon.
Thank you. Further discussion?
Yeah, this week I was down, talking to Stonem Ford, and they have a vehicle called an Escape Hybrid that gets 36 miles to the gallon, and I have an invoice here showing the amount that it costs. And this is not taking into consideration the government discounting, but it's $28,252. As you know, these vehicles get recycled through the town so that other people can joyride around back and forth to work. So I'm gonna make a motion today-
Mr. McDonald, you're gonna sit down in a minute for the rest of the meeting. I'm getting a little tired with your antics against town employees. We're here to conduct serious business, and if you're not, I suggest you sit down or leave.
I'm gonna make a motion that we purchase either no more than four-cylinder vehicles or the Escape Hybrid that gets 36 miles to the gallon.
Is there a second? Hearing no second, I'll rule the motion out of order. Thank you. Further discussion? Yes, sir. No, go ahead, yes, sir.
Regardless of gas mileage, my main concern is to make sure that the police officers that are inside these vehicles are the safest they can be. And for that reason, I don't care about the gas mileage, I care them being, be able to do their job. Thank you.
Mr. Woods, did you want to speak? I'm sorry, I didn't see you over there, I apologize. Okay, sorry. Further discussion? I was kind of focused on that microphone for some reason. We're on Article Number Six, $104,000 for four replacement police cruisers. Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no.
No.
Voted. We're on Article Number Seven, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate transfer from available funds or borrow pursuant to any applicable statute, a sum of money for the excavation and proper disposal of contaminated soil located on the town's form of firing range, and further to engage engineering, surveying, and other professionals as may be necessary to carry out the foregoing or do anything in relation thereto. Mr. Newhouse.
Mr. Moderator, I move that $123,000 be transferred from available funds, free cash, to be spent by the town manager for the excavation and proper disposal of contaminated soil located on the town's form of firing range, and for the purpose of engaging engineering, surveying, and other professionals as may be necessary to carry out the foregoing.
Is there a second? Motion's made and seconded. Finance committee recommendation is approval. Discussion. $123,000 is the amount? Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. Voted. We're on Article Number Eight, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate transfer from available funds or borrow pursuant to any applicable statute, a sum of money for engineering, surveying, and other professional services to develop an accurate and detailed GIS mapping of the storm drainage system in order to implement the first of a three-phase project to develop a master plan for the town's storm water drainage system or do anything in relation thereto. Ms. Sullivan.
Mr. Moderator, I move that $70,000 be transferred from available funds, free cash, to be spent by the town manager for engineering, surveying, and other professional services for the purpose of developing an accurate and detailed GIS mapping of the storm drainage system to enable the implementation of the first of three-phase project to develop a master plan for the town's storm water drainage system.
Is there a second? Motion's made and seconded. Finance committee recommendation is approval of the amount of $70,000, ladies and gentlemen. Discussion. Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. Voted. We're on Article Number Nine, to see if the town will vote to transfer from available funds in the fiscal year 2005 budget, a sum or sums of money for the operation of various town departments and expenses or do anything in relation thereto. Mr. Kira.
Mr. Moderator? Yes, Mr. Moderator, with your permission, the transfer articles are divided into three separate motions.
And I'll accept those as three, three separate motions. Thank you.
I move that the 300, I move that $356,500 be transferred from the following fiscal year 2005 accounts. Board of Assessors, ATB costs $60,000. Public Works, Personal Services, Highway Full Time, $38,500. Town Engineer Full Time, $10,000. Tree Full Time, $5,000. Parks and Grounds Full Time, $8,000. Highway Seasonal, $3,500. Stream Maintenance Seasonal, $6,500. Public Works, Contractual Services, Public Streetlights, $13,000. Rubbish Collection and Disposal, $130,000. Public Works, Materials and Supplies, Highway, Construction Supplies and Road Improvements, $30,000. Materials and Supplies, Drainage Projects, $30,000. Planning and Conservation Salary, Director, $12,000. Historical Commission Salaries, $10,000, for a total of $356,500. And all of those accounts be transferred to the following fiscal year 2005 accounts. Public Works, Personnel Services, Snow and Ice, Extra Help Overtime, $106,500. Public Works, Contractual Services, Snow and Ice, Miscellaneous Services, $130,000. Public Works, Contractual Services, Snow and Ice, Salt and Sand, $120,000, for a total of $356,500.
I'll accept that as the main motion on 9A, we'll call it. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion's made and seconded. Finance committee recommendation is approval. Discussion.
Mr. Moderator, just to explain briefly, this is really to accommodate the, the snow and ice removal operation this year. That amount of money, along with $111,000, that does not need to be appropriated, but it's coming from the disaster relief funds that have been made available to the town through FEMA, will make up, assuming that you vote in favor of this, will, will make up the deficit.
Further discussion? We're ready for the vote. $356,500 being transferred from various town departments to three snow and ice accounts. Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. Voted. We're on 9B. Mr. Kira.
Mr. Chairman, I move that $300,000 be transferred from the overlay surplus account to the fiscal year 2005 unclassified and reserve employee health and life insurance account.
Is there a second? Motion's made and seconded. Finance committee recommendation is approval. Discussion. The amount is $300,000. Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. Voted. We're on 9C. Mr. Kira.
And finally, Mr. Chairman, I move that $157,100 be transferred from the following fiscal year 2005 accounts. Public Safety, Central Dispatch, Personnel Services, $40,000. Unclassified and Reserve, Professional and Technical Services, $70,000. Medicare, $10,000. Salary Adjustments and Additional Costs, $25,000. Employee Retirement and Unused Sick Leave, $4,000. Capital Outlay Town Hall Roof, $8,100, a total of $157,100 to the following fiscal year 2005 accounts. Public Buildings Heating Fuel, $52,100. Fire Salary Overtime, $25,000. Town Council Legal Services, $80,000, for a total of $157,100.
Is there a second? Motion's made and seconded. Finance committee recommendation is approval. Discussion. The amount is $157,100. Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. Voted. That concludes the budget portion of the warrant, ladies and gentlemen. Articles 10 through 33 will be taken up in random selection process. I'll pick the articles from the bowl next to the podium. We're on Article Number 30, which is on page 29, ladies and gentlemen. To see if the town will vote to authorize transfer of the care, custody, management, and control of certain parcels of land owned by the town of Wilmington here and after described to the selectmen of the town of Wilmington. Said land having been determined to be no longer needed for any municipal purpose and for the express purpose of conveying the same, all in accordance with the general laws, Chapter 30B, and further to selectmen be, and are hereby authorized to grant and convey such interest in the land as is owned by the town of Wilmington, and upon such terms and conditions as shall be determined by the selectmen in accordance with Chapter 3, Section 16 of the bylaws of the inhabitants of the town of Wilmington revised. Said parcels and interest are described as Map 33, Parcel 40, or do anything in relation thereto. Is there a motion? Mr. Valenti, I believe is the petitioner. Mr. Valenti, not being here, ladies and gentlemen, this parcel, the process in conveying property at town meeting is that there needs to be a declaration of surplus from the town manager. The town manager had determined that this parcel was not surplus, communicated that to the petitioner, and I believe the petitioner is, is not here anticipating that we will pass over this article, because we would not be allowed to proceed anyway, because the town manager determined this not to be surplus to the town's needs. So at this point, I would entertain a motion to pass over.
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Is there a second? Motion's made and seconded. Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. Voted. We're on Article Number 13. To see if the town will vote to designate the Wilmington Skate Park located on the grounds of the Shawshine School as a lasting memorial to Justin A. O'Neill by naming said park in his honor or do anything in relation thereto. Mr. West.
I move that the town vote to designate the Wilmington Skate Park located on the grounds of the Shawshine School as a lasting memorial to Mr. Justin A. O'Neill by naming said park the Justin Andrew O'Neill Memorial Skate Park.
Is there a second? Motion's made and seconded. Finance committee recommendation is approval. Discussion. We're on Article Number 13. Those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. Motion is passed and done so unanimously. We're on Article Number 19, which is on page 26. We're on Article number nineteen, which is on page twenty-six. To see if the town will vote to amend the zoning bylaw and associated zoning map of the town of Wilmington by taking the following action. One, amend section 5.3.4 Hammerhead Lots by deleting the existing section 5.3.4 and substituting the following provision. Hammerhead Lots are allowed in the residential districts, not including the planned residential development district, subject to the following criteria or do anything in relation there to. Is there a motion, Mr. Sorrentino?
Yes, Mr. Moderator, I move that the zoning bylaw of the town of Wilmington be amended by taking the following action.
And is the action the same as is in the booklet, Mr. Sorrentino?
Yes, it is, Mr. Moderator.
Great, I'll accept that as the main motion. Is there a second? Motion's made in second and finance committee recommendation, approval and planning board recommendation is obviously approval. Discussion? Mr. Segal.
Yes, my name is Carl Segal. I'm on the Zoning Board of Appeals. We discussed this at the Zoning Board of Appeals meeting. I do not recall the specific date of that meeting. I believe it was the March meeting. We were not asked for a recommendation on this, however, as a board, we voted, I believe, in complete agreement that we did not agree with the wording of this particular change in our bylaw, and we're a little bit mystified as to why someone would change a bylaw and not talk to the people who are in charge of that particular bylaw, which is the Zoning Board of Appeals. We voted to not recommend this approval, this change.
Thank you. Further discussion? Town Council just brought to my attention that the motion by the planning board actually deleted the words or do anything in relation there to, and I'll accept that as the main motion, just for the record. Further discussion? Yes, ma'am. Ms. Carlson.
Oh.
Do you have the microphone on that side? I can't hear.
Sonia Carlson from Andover Street. Will the rules and regulations remain the same regarding a forty-foot frontage?
Mr. Sorrentino? Yes, it will.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Further discussion? Yes, sir.
Mr. Stewart Edwardlau, member of the Board of Appeals, and I also want to reiterate what Carl just said. We, I believe we sent a letter to the town manager and/or the planning board, and I was particularly concerned why that wasn't included in this booklet that we have, that the Board of Appeals did not approve this. And I think it's wrong that we should make this a right instead of people coming in front of the Board of Appeals, because there's always issues on these Hammerhead Lots. Thank you.
Mr. Kira.
Just for the record, I received no letter from the Board of Appeals, and neither did the planning board or Mrs. Hamilton.
Further discussion? We're ready for the vote. Ms. Sullivan?
I too agree with the Board of Appeal members. It's to my understanding that there was no discussion with that board when this came forward, and there's a lot of good reasons why it should go to the Board of Appeals. It stated that it's just dimensional reasons, but this also gives the abudders the right to weigh in on public safety and those type of issues within their neighborhoods. So I too support the Board of Appeals and their opinion that it should remain there, and if it's going to change from their jurisdiction, that there should have been public hearings to such. Thank you.
Further discussion? We're ready for the vote. This requires a two-thirds. I've heard discussion on both sides, so I'd ask the tellers to take their places. Tellers ready? All those in favor of Article nineteen is presented signify by rising at your place. Please remain standing for one second. All those opposed to Article nineteen is presented signify by rising at your place. It's still counting. Vote as this falls, sixty-two, and the affirmative, one-thirty, and the negative motion fails. To see if the town will vote to amend the zoning bylaw and associated zoning map of the town of Wilmington by taking the following action. One, amend section 10.5 special permit by deleting the phrase section 8.3.3 and substituting the phrase section 10.6 or do anything in relation there to. Mr. Sorrentino.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the zoning bylaw of the town of Wilmington be amended by taking the following action. Amend section 10.5 special permit by deleting the phrase section 8.3.3 and substituting the phrase section 10, or do anything in relation there to.
Ten, 10.6, Mr. Sorrentino? Is it? 10.6, okay, and we'll stop the motion right there? And eliminate or do anything in relation there to. Is there a second? Is there a second? Second. Finance committee recommendation, approval. Planning board recommendation is approval. Mr. Segal.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This particular change in the bylaw reflects a special permit that is issued by the Board of Appeals. We actually were the ones that discovered the reference errors. There is no substantive change to the bylaw, and we were the ones that forwarded on. So even though no one has asked us for our position on this, we suggest that you do it.
Further discussion? Ready for the vote? We're on Article number twenty-three. This requires two-thirds, but we'll try a voice vote. Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. Voted and done so unanimously. We're on Article number sixteen, which is on page fifteen. To see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate transfer from available funds or borrow from the Massachusetts Water Pollution Abatement Trust or otherwise borrow pursuant to any applicable statute, a sum of money to be spent by the town manager pursuant to agreements here and after to be executed by and between the Wilmington Board of Health and owners of property used for human occupation in the town for the purpose of implementing a betterment loan program of advancing loans to be repaid by such property owners from betterments pursuant to chapter 111, section 127b, 12 of the general laws of the Commonwealth to improve the public health of such property used for human occupation by advancing funds to pay for repairs, replacements, or upgrades of septic systems or other costs specified in chapter 29c of the general laws or do anything in relation there to. Is there a motion, Mr. Erickson?
Mr. Moderator, I move that $200,000 be appropriated for the purpose of financing the following water pollution abatement facility projects. Repair, replacement, and/or upgrade of septic systems pursuant to agreements between the Board of Health and residential property owners, including without limitation all costs thereof as defined in section one of chapter 29c of the general laws. That to meet this appropriation, the treasurer, with the approval of the Board of Selectmen, is authorized to borrow $200,000 and issue bonds or notes therefore under general law chapter 111, section 127b and a half, and/or chapter 29c of the general laws or any other applicable statute. That project and financing cost shall be repaid by the property owners in accordance to those agreements, but such bonds or notes shall be general obligations to the town. That the treasurer, with the approval of the Board of Selectmen, is authorized to borrow all or a portion of such amount of the Massachusetts Water Pollution Abatement Trust established pursuant to chapter 29c and in connection therewith to enter into a loan grant agreement and/or security agreement with the trust and otherwise contract with the trust and the Department of Environmental Protection with respect to such loan for any federal or state and for any federal or state aid available for the projects or for the financing thereof, and that the town manager is authorized to enter into a project regulatory agreement with the Department of Environmental Protection to expend all funds available for the projects and to take any other action necessary to carry out the projects.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion's made and seconded. Finance committee recommendation is approval. The significant change from your booklet, ladies and gentlemen, is the amount of $200,000 has been added, and it gives the selectmen the authority to borrow and/or issue bonds or notes for that $200,000. Is that correct? Great, thank you. Discussion. Mr. Erickson.
All the rhetoric you just heard in that motion means that the Board of Health can continue the loan program for people who need to repair their septic systems and can't afford to do so. They can receive money through the Board of Health from the state, and they can repay that over time. It's a good program. We've been doing it now since 1999, and it's time to renew it, and that's why this lengthy article is submitted, so that the transfers of monies can take place and the program can continue on.
Further discussion? Ready for the vote? This requires, oops, yes, sir.
Just a question. How, what percentage of the town right now is on sewers versus septic systems?
Mr. Erickson?
I think the sewers cover about, what, sixteen percent of the town? The superintendent could answer that question. I think septic is around eighty-five percent, eighty-four percent, some septic systems, and about fifteen, sixteen percent is sewed, somewhere in that category.
So a program like this is going to really be in need for a long time until we can get some sewage within the town?
Yes, that would be a very long time.
Thank you.
Further discussion? We're ready for the vote. This requires a two-thirds as well. We'll try a voice vote. Those in favor of Article sixteen is presented signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. Voted and done so unanimously. We're on Article number twenty-four, which is on page twenty-seven. To see if the town will vote to authorize the transfer of the care, custody, management, and control of certain parcels of land owned by the town of Wilmington and currently in the care and custody of the town manager and/or Board of Selectmen here and after described to the Conservation Commission. Said parcels are described as map thirty-four, parcel seventy-one b and seventy-two, map forty parcels one-seventy-eight, one-seventy-nine, one-eighty, one-eighty-one, one-eighty-two, one-eighty-four, one-eighty-six, and one-eighty-eight. Map fifty parcel two, map fifty-one parcels eighty-five a, eighty-five b, and ninety-four a. Map seventy-one parcel fifty-one, fifteen. Map seventy-three parcel fifty-nine a. Map eighty parcel thirty-four. And map one-hundred, parcel sixty-one, or do anything in relation there to. Is there a motion, Ms. Waterhouse?
Yes, I'd like to move that the Board of Selectmen and/or town manager be authorized to transfer the care, custody, management, and control of certain parcels of land owned by the town of Wilmington here and after described by, to the Conservation Commission.
And Ms. Waterhouse, does your motion read as contained in the booklet?
No, there is one exception. The removal of parcel fifty.
Map fifty parcel two.
That's correct.
Great. I'll accept that as the main motion. Is there a second? Motion's made and seconded. Finance committee recommendation is approval. Planning board recommendation is approval. So Ms. Waterhouse has deleted map fifty parcel two, so she is moving to transfer all of the other parcels in the booklet other than that one to the Conservation Commission. We're ready for the vote. This also requires a two-thirds. We'll try a voice vote. All those in favor of Article twenty-four is presented signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. All those opposed say no.
No.
I'd ask the tellers to take their places. All those in favor of Article twenty-four is presented signify by rising at your place. All those opposed to Article twenty-four is presented signify by rising at your place. The vote as this falls, two-twenty, and the affirmative, six, and the negative motion passes with the required two-thirds. We're on Article number twenty-five. I'll mix these up a little bit. To see if the town will vote to authorize transfer of the care, custody, management, and control of certain parcels of land owned by the town of Wilmington and currently in the care and custody of the town manager and/or the Board of Selectmen here and after described to the Conservation Commission. Said parcels are described as map R3-105/82, known as Camp Omen, or do anything in relation there to. Mr. McCoy.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I move that the Board of Selectmen and/or town manager be authorized to transfer the care, custody, management, and control of the following parcel of land owned by the town of Wilmington and hereafter described to the Conservation Commission, said parcel described as map nine-three parcel one-oh-five-eighty-two.
Is there a second? Motion's made and seconded. Finance committee recommendation is approval. Planning board recommendation is approval. Ready for the vote? Try a voice vote. Those in favor of Article twenty-five is presented signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. The vote as this falls, 220 in the affirmative, six in the negative. Motion carries with the required two-thirds. We're on Article number 29. To see if the town will vote to authorize the Board of Selectmen to request the state legislature to authorize Thomas Taylor be allowed to have his test results for the Massachusetts Firefighter's Civil Service Exam, April 2004, be allowed for any employment consideration as a firefighter in the town of Wilmington. Notwithstanding the provisions of the general laws, rules, or regulations to the contrary regulating age of applicants for appointment as a firefighter in the said town, and provided he meets all other requirements, he shall be eligible for certification and appointment to the Fire Department of Wilmington, subject to the appointment of the appointing authority or do anything in relation there too. Is there a motion? Mr. Taylor?
I'm Tom Taylor, 98 Parker Street. I was born and raised in Wilmington.
Mr. Taylor, if we could just get the motion on the floor. If you could just read, "I moved that the town vote."
I moved that the town vote.
And does your motion read as is contained in the booklet?
Yes, it does.
It does, thank you. I'll accept that as the main motion. Is there a second? Motion's made and seconded. Finance Committee recommendation is approval. Discussion. Mr. Taylor.
Sorry about that. Tom Taylor, 98 Parker Street. I was born and raised in Wilmington. I attended Wilmington Public Schools. Have a veteran status. I'm still in the individual ready reserve system. I'd also like to thank everyone who signed my petition on this matter, and the town clerk for her assistance. Thank you.
Thank you. Further discussion? Yes, sir.
Yes. The reason we're voting is, is this the age exception that we're doing this for primarily? Okay, everyone deserves a chance, and I'm in favor of it.
The question, Mr. Taylor, is how old are you? I can't hear you, I'm sorry. 36?
Yes, 36.
Thank you. 36. Further discussion? We're ready for the vote. We're on Article number 29. All those in favor of Article 29 is presented, signify by saying aye. Those opposed say no. Voted and done so unanimously. We're on Article number 32. To see if the town will vote to amend the Wilmington zoning map and associated zoning bylaws of the town of Wilmington by voting to rezone Residence 60 to Residence 20, the following described parcels of land as listed on the assessors' legal file, Map 10, Parcels 23 and 31, for the construction of one single-family dwelling or do anything in relation there too. Is there a motion? Mr. Penny. If you could just put the motion on the floor that I moved that the town vote.
I moved that the town vote.
And does your motion read as is contained in the booklet? It does, with the exception of or do anything in relation there too. I'll accept that as the main motion. Is there a second? Is there a second? Second, thank you. Finance Committee recommendation is disapproval. Planning Board recommendation is disapproval. Discussion. Mr. Penny.
Thank everybody for coming, and I apologize for the lack of information at the meeting, before the town meeting. My daughter was having surgery, so I had to send my brother-in-law, who's a substitute. But our main goal is to subdivide this property to build one single-family dwelling. Ultimately, we were rezoning so we could meet the frontage requirement, which is why we're going from R60 to R20. As far as square footage goes, our property consists of over 85,000 square feet. If we subdivided each lot, it would probably be 40, 45,000 square feet, and all the abutting properties to ours are roughly probably 12,000 square feet and under. So as far as conforming to the neighborhood, we don't see that being a problem. And that's where we stand.
That's it. Further discussion? Yes, sir?
I would like to hear from the Planning Board why they recommend disapproval.
Ms. Hamilton, the Planning Director.
Mr. Moderator, thank you for recognizing me. At the public hearing on this application, the applicant did not have any information for us. The subdivision of this land is for an additional house. The applicant has said one house, but I believe this is a second to be added here. There are substantial wetlands around this property as well. It's unclear, because we've seen no engineered plans, that even the rezoning will allow for subdivision and approval of two lots.
Thank you. Yes, sir, you're still on the floor.
Yep. Could my parcel have an answer from the applicants? Their view on it? The plans and whether they think they're in wetlands or what their plans are actually to do with this?
Sure. Mr. Penny.
Thank you for the question. Ideally, the first step in this whole process is to have this rezoned. Without rezoning, for us to go spend, you know, $10,000 engineering would be a waste of money. So we're asking the town to give us the opportunity for this first step to rezone, so we could sit down and meet with the Planning Board and Conservation to see if indeed the lot will meet the requirements. But this is the first step of many.
Is there, is there a house on this property at the present time?
There is. There's a single-family dwelling in which we residing right now. We would build an additional single-family, sell the current one we're in, and move to the new one.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
May I be recognized?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. I'm going to stand on my tiptoes. Okay, I understand Mr. Penny, and I do not, thank you. I do not know this man, but what I do know is that he is trying to rezone his property from R60 to R20. And as far as I know, the Planning Board and the Finance Committee, whatever, you know, recommended not approving this here, basically because he borders Lover's Brook, I believe. I don't really feel that we should be penalizing this individual landowner because he borders Lover's Brook. We have quite a few huge developments in the town of Wilmington, right on my street alone, that borders Lover's Brook. I also feel very strongly that this here individual is a landowner, and that some of these regulations maybe should be reformed. We can't dictate, and this is what we're doing. He's entitled to his property. If the Planning Board, the Finance Committee, Conservation, you know, wants to restrict the use of this property, I feel that this here, this young couple should be compensated for that restriction, or else we should start reforming the regulations, not only in the town of Wilmington, but also in the state of Massachusetts. I mean, he is also protected under the Fifth Amendment of the Constitution of the United States. Just compensation is the word I'm trying to get across. Thank you.
Further discussion? Mr. Sorrentino.
Yes, Mr. Moderator. I'd just like to point out that this is not a new article. This article has been before the town, I believe, at least twice previously, and if anything, this time we know actually less than the previous petitioners. And I'd just like to say that the property owner isn't entitled to anything. That's why he's here in front of, at town meeting, to get approval. There are rules and regulations, and he has to go through the process just like anybody else. Thank you.
Further, just clarification on Mr. Sorrentino's point. The petitioners were in two years ago, and they need to wait a two-year period unless they receive favorable vote of the Planning Board at the previous town meeting. Town meeting voted this article down two years ago. The Planning Board voted against that article at the time, so the petitioner had to wait two years to come before you again. So that's the purpose that it's here now. Further discussion? Yes, sir.
Mr. Moderator, my name is Guy DiNuccio. I live on Sarafina's Way. I abut the property down here, kind of. If you look at this map, it's a little deceiving. All those streets there aren't there. You're talking the bog area. I don't know if you're familiar with that area. Take a look at it, Susanna. I don't know how this land is marked. Is it industrial or residential? It is residential. Is that?
The land presently is Residential 60.
Right. Is this a butt Berica? Doesn't that, is it that close to the Berica line over there, and is that industrial?
The petitioner is shaking his head yes.
All right. I just wanted to clarify that all those streets there are in the bog. That's all wetlands, and I don't really know if you can build in there, you know, if it'll perk or anything like that. Did you have any tests?
I have not had any tests, but again, that's the reason for the rezoning, so we can get the bog rolling and move towards that.
All right. Are you looking for these streets to be developed or something like that? Because they don't exist right here.
Correct. No. There's your question off.
All right. Well, there's no frontage. How are you going to get in there?
Standoff of Riviera, which is the current existing one.
All righty. I just wanted to point all that out. Thank you.
Thank you. Further discussion?
Mr. Moderator.
Up the back, Mr. Costa.
Steve Costa, 124. I've got a question for the pennies. What is your setback on your existing home on the property from Lover's Brook at this time?
Over 200 feet.
All right. Now, are you, just because of all the problems we're having with Conservation, people building near Conservation, all the setbacks, are you intending building close by the brook, within that 200-foot buffer?
No, we'll meet all those zoning requirements with the rezoning.
All right. The only, the only reason I ask on, Mr. Penny, is because from looking at the assess, from looking at the map that's in the booklet, it looks to me that Lover's Brook runs adjacent to your property, not on your property, right? So if you're within that 200-foot buffer zone, I would actually urge the town body to vote for this. These people here are coming in front of this town two years ago. They got rejected, the disapproval. I think that if anybody should be making any disapproval of this property, I'd like to hear from the Conservation Commission Chairman to hear their view of the conservation.
Does Conservation Commission have a position on, on the article? Is Waterhouse still here? I don't see her. I'm sorry, Mr. Costa, she's not here.
Thank you.
Further discussion? Ms. Sullivan.
I see that there's no member of the Conservation Commission here, but I just want to say, to my understanding, and I can defer this to the Director of Planning and Conservation, to my understanding, there's been no filing, there's been no delineated wetlands, there's been no delineation of Lover's Brook on this site. So I don't see how the applicant can stand, you know, can say whether there is or there isn't, I'm sorry, the petitioner, where this is going to be. And I would suggest if he's saying that it's going to be without, outside of the 200 feet of Lover's Brook, that instead of saying it on town meeting floor, that that should be in writing. Because my experience in the past is that sometimes someone will come to town meeting, say something, and then do something opposite. If you're willing to put that in writing... And I would defer to the Director of Planning and Conservation, Mr. Moderator, to talk about whether this has gone to conservation. Thank you.
Ms. Hamilton.
To my understanding, this has not come before conservation, and that's part of the problem here. We really don't have enough information on which to act. We don't go around rezoning, downzoning land just because someone thinks they want to do something there. They should be asked to show what they can do and what they can't do. It is a fairly substantial piece of land. I guess I would also question whether the applicant really can do this without constructing a road. By looking at it, it appears that road construction is also required in this case. There's just not enough information here. We haven't done delineations, we haven't been able to go out to do inspections on the property. We just shouldn't go ahead and rezone this without more information.
Further discussion? Yes, sir.
Yeah, I guess I need a little clarification. Seems we getting off the track here. I thought the vote was to rezone an area and not to give a building permit with complete autonomy.
It is, sir.
All the questions are about whether he can build or not, what the building's going to be, where the building is going to be. I don't see how that's relevant.
Well, sir, since, let me answer the question for you. Since the petitioner's article says to build one single-family home, I find it very pertinent.
Well, he would, he would still need to go in front of the proper boards, once it is rezoned, to get building permits and being compliant with, with conservation, all these other things. It seems that everyone is under this, understanding that if it is rezoned, then he's just going to start building the house tomorrow, and I know that not to be the case.
I don't know what the intention of the previous speakers are. I think they have a right to ask a question as to what the petition is landing, sir.
Absolutely. No, I agree with that, but I think we're getting off the, off the point here of just rezoning.
Okay, thank you. Further discussion? Mr. McDonald.
Thank you. I believe if he doesn't pass all the requirements, such as Board of Health and all the other department approvals, he doesn't get a building permit. So for the Planning Board to get up here and try to deceive people and get you to think that he's going to get a building permit today, it's a little ridiculous. I see houses being built by rivers. I see houses being built by swamps, on common driveways, multiple houses. I believe this guy has a right to at least get a rezoning and then go through the proper channels, rather than having the Planning Board get up here and state that they're really concerned. It's unfortunate this guy isn't buddy-buddy with the Planning Board, because it seems to me that...
Mr. McDonald, Mr. McDonald, thank you very much. Ms. Hamilton, Mr. McDonald, you're out of order. Ms. Hamilton, you may respond.
Thank you, Mr. Stewart. I appreciate the opportunity. The Planning Board, it doesn't matter whether the Planning Board is buddy-buddy with someone, it doesn't, that has no effect on the Board's opinions. It also is totally inappropriate for someone to allege here that the Planning Board is attempting to deceive anyone. We're asking for information, no more, no less than we would ask of anyone else in this room.
Yes, ma'am.
Maureen Taylor-Gardnev. My question would be, if they're just looking to build, why can they not do that without rezoning? If they're just looking to build one house, can't they do that with the land that they have without rezoning the whole parcel?
Mr. Penny?
No. Frontage is, frontage is a big issue with the river, with Lover's Brook. It's the biggest reason for frontage, which is the biggest reason for the rezoning.
So in the, in the map, in the book, there's 23 and 31. Is your current house on one of those parcels now?
Yes. Top, on Lot 23.
And you want to rezone so you can build in the middle of those two?
Nope. Again, that house would also be on Lot 23.
Okay. I guess I'm confused as to why you can't build on Lot 23 then without rezoning.
R60, 60,000 square feet per lot. We have roughly 90, somewhere in the 80, between 85 and 90. So with the frontage requirement at R60, we would not meet that.
And would you end up with two houses or one on lot, on this, on 23, in the book?
Right now, on Lot 23, there is one. There would be one additional dwelling added to Lot 23.
So you would actually end up with two homes, if it were rezoned?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Ms. Ledhan.
Yes, I just wanted to, a little common sense here, that this is putting the cart before the horse. There are procedures in this town, and also to stand up and say, for someone to throw out a charge of deception on the Planning Board is just nonsense. out a charge of deception on the planning board is just nonsense. And they are a reliable board, and they all volunteers, and Mrs. Hamilton is certainly capable of handling this procedure in a proper way. Thank you. May I move the question?
No, not after you spoke. You cannot. I'm sorry, Mrs. Ledhan. Further discussion? Mr. Sorrentino.
Yes, Mr. Moderator. Don't forget, he's talking about parcels 23 and 31 to be rezoned. He's stating that on 23, there'll be two houses. Well, I can't tell if on 31, there'll be another house. So it's actually two parcels of land there. So we need more information to make a proper judgment. We do not have it.
Further discussion? Ms. Urick.
This is the way I'm hearing it. He bought a piece of property, Lot 23, and it was zoned for one acre. He had the legal right and he was entitled to put one home on that lot. He now wants to put an additional home on that lot, and while looking for permission to do that, he's asking to also rezon a second lot, which is abut him. So we have the future of the possibility of this gentleman coming here again and looking to put three more homes in his neighborhood. That is the problem for the planning board.
Further discussion?
I move the vote on this article?
You're moving the question?
No question.
He's moved the question, which means you want to end debate and vote, is the motion. Is there a second?
Yes, there is.
Okay. What we're voting on is to end debate. If you vote in favor of the motion, we will give the maker of the motion, Mr. Penny, up to 10 minutes to address the body if he should so choose, but no one else will be able to speak. If you want to continue debate, you should vote no. If you want to vote and debate and give Mr. Penny 10 minutes if he wants to, vote yes. If you want to continue debate, vote no. Okay? We clear? All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. Voted. Mr. Penny, if you should so choose.
Thanks again, everybody we know for coming up. The biggest thing I'd like to get across is, in rezoning this, as the gentleman said before, in no way, shape, or form guarantees us a building permit for anything. Our main goal here is to build one single-family home, donate any excess land we have to conservation, sell our current home, and move me, my wife, my five children to the new home. And it's as simple as that. We're going to conform to the neighborhood as far as square footage goes, if not have more. So we'll not take any character away from the neighborhood, so to speak. And as far as going forward, obviously, we would work with the Conservation and Planning Board. I had Michael down there last Thursday, and he had some pretty positive feedback. So again, this is just the first step of many, as far as putting the horse before the cart, whatnot. But this will just allow us to get the ball rolling, and your vote yes would be greatly appreciated. Thank you.
Okay. It has to tell us to take their places. This requires a two-thirds vote. Anybody up the back of the room, if you wish to vote, you need to be seated. All those in favor of Article 32 as presented, signify by rising at your place. All those opposed to Article 32 as presented, signify by rising at your place. The vote is as follows: 142 in the affirmative, 118 in the negative. Motion fails for lack of two-thirds vote. To see if the town will vote to amend the zoning bylaw and associated zoning map of the town of Wilmington by taking the following action. One, amend Section 6.6.8.1 Special Permit Granting Authority by deleting the phrase "Section 8.5" and substituting the phrase "Section 10.5." Two, amend Section 6.6.8.1 Special Permit Granting Authority by deleting the phrase "Section 8.5.9" and substituting the phrase "Section 10.5.9," or do anything in relation there to. Mr. Sorrentino.
Yes, Mr. Moderator. I move that the zoning bylaw of the town of Wilmington be amended by taking the following actions. One, amend Section 6.6.8.1 Special Permit Granting Authority by deleting the phrase "Section 8.5" and substituting the phrase "Section 10.5." And, two, amend Section 6.6.8.1 Special Permit Granting Authority by deleting the phrase "Section 8.5.9" and substituting the phrase "Section 10.5.9."
Is there a second? Motion's made in second of Finance Committee recommendation. Approval Planning Board recommendation is approval. Mr. Segal.
Hello. My name is Segal. I'm an associate member of the zoning Board of Appeals. The Zoning Board of Appeals is the special permit granting authority in this case. This is another situation where we happen to, one of the members of the zoning board identified a typographical or a print that was simply referring to the wrong section of the bylaw. And even though no one has asked us for our approval or not, the Board of Appeals did discuss this, and we suggest that this change be adopted. Thank you.
Further discussion? We're ready for the vote. This requires two-thirds. We'll try a voice vote. All those in favor of Article 21 is presented, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. Voted and done so unanimously. We're on Article Number 10, which is on page 13. To see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate, transfer from available funds or borrow pursuant to any applicable statute, a sum of money for the purpose of providing senior citizen work opportunities for the services rendered to the town in accordance with the town's senior citizen tax work-off program, or do anything in relation there to. Mr. Lapore.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I move that $10,000 be transferred and appropriated from the fiscal year '06 tax levy and other general revenues of the town to be spent by the town manager for the purpose of providing senior citizens work opportunity for services rendered to the town in accordance with the town's senior citizen tax work-off program.
Is there a second? Motion's made in second of Finance Committee recommendation is approval. The amount is $10,000 that Mr. Lapore put on the floor. Discussion? Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. We're on Article Number 17. To see if the town will vote to continue its participation in the Massachusetts Water Resource Authority Financial Assistance Program, which provides grants and interest-free loans for the purpose of funding an infiltration and inflow reduction and sewer system rehabilitation program, and to authorize a selectman and/or town manager to accept said grants and to execute documents relative to the interest-free loans as may be required, and further to appropriate said funds for engineering services, construction or reconstruction of sewage, sewage systems, and sewage disposal facilities in appurtenances, and to determine how the same shall be raised, whether by taxation, transfer, or borrowing, or do any combination thereof, or do anything in relation there to. Is there a motion, Mr. Bolero?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Moderator. Good morning. I move that the town's participation in the Massachusetts Water Resource Authority Financial Assistance Program, providing for a grant of $102,600 and an interest-free loan of $125,400, all for the purpose of funding an infiltration and inflow reduction and sewer system rehabilitation program be continued, and that the Board of Selectmen and/or Town Manager be authorized to accept said grants and to execute documents relative to the interest-free loans as may be required.
Is there a second? Motion's made in second of Finance Committee recommendation is approval. The change, Mr. Bolero, is $102,600 as a grant and $125,400 as an interest-free loan.
That is correct.
Thank you. Discussion. Mr. Bolero.
Ladies and gentlemen, this is a, you're authorizing the town to go forward with a program we've participated in for a number of years. Basically, the MWRA has a program where we can access grants and interest-free loan to fund the reduction of excess water into our sewer system. You may not be aware of it, but the MWRA processes our sewer. The less flow through the meters that calculate the amount of money we owe to them, the better the town, better off the town is, obviously, financially. All you're authorizing is for us to go forward and to continue and participate in that program.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
John Goggan, 28, Indian. How long have we been participating in this? And is this a, an article that would have to be reauthorized next year? And what projects, and I guess the third question is, what projects have we done so far with any previous authorizations?
If I may, I'm going to defer to the Superintendent of the Water and Sewer Commission. He can give you that information down to the number. Has far better knowledge about our participation in the past and the other questions that you had. Mr. Superintendent, if I may...
Mr. Woods.
Good morning. We have had four different phases that we have accepted at various town meetings over the past, I believe, six to seven years. We have removed 230,560 gallons per day of extraneous water entering the sewer system. We still have approximately that same amount of water to remove, and this funds here will help us remove somewhere in the neighborhood of 100,000 gallons.
And this, the water that's removed is coming back into our, the Ipswich River watershed or our watershed? Is that correct?
It is water that is not migrating into the pipes from the Ipswich River basin. That is correct.
Okay, thank you.
Further discussion? Mr. McDonald.
Yes, just wanted, Mr. Woods, to answer how the gallonage is calculated that goes into this system.
Mr. Woods?
Yes, we have an engineering consultant that is an expert in this area, and they do flow measurements over time, depth of pipe, depth of water in the pipe, and they can calculate probably plus or minus 10% of how much water we are removing when we make these repairs.
Is there any calculation based on people's water meters?
They use the water meters throughout the entire town or a certain area that we're actually looking at to figure what the average daily flow is. So we do take meter readings, figure what the flow is over the course of a few hours, calculate that over a day, measure the flow in those pipes from sewer, and at that point, we run the comparisons of how much of that water is actually making it to the sewer and how much of it is extraneous that we have removed.
The reason I ask the question, and maybe you could clarify this, there had been some talk about people wanting to put on a separate meter for watering their lawn, and I'm just wondering if people's watering of their lawns is being calculated as gallonage going into the system when actually it's really not?
I'm unaware of anyone asking for that. The town did have a policy where they did allow water meters to be separated for lawn watering. We do not allow that now, and as everyone should be aware, over the last three years, we do not allow water sprinklers to operate in town.
Are we being charged for this extra water that may not be going in there, Mr. Woods? Do you think it may be logical to allow people to actually put meters when you do allow them to start watering the lawn again, so that we're not being charged by the state or having gallons being calculated that really aren't going into that?
I don't believe we should put that policy in place, because it's a bad situation for the environment and for water conservation. The meters that are, the town is billed by the MWRA as a separate meter down at the Wilmington line.
Thank you, Mr. Woods. I'd have to say that I disagree with you. I'd like to recommend that the town take a look at this. I think that it's kind of foolish for people to have to pay for water for going at the sewers if they're going to use it to water their lawns when the ban is lifted. Thank you.
Further discussion? We're ready for the vote. This does require two-thirds vote. Try a voice vote. Those in favor of Article 17 is presented, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. Voted and done so unanimously. We're on Article Number 11. To see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate, transfer from available funds or borrow pursuant to any applicable statute, a sum of $5,000 for the observance of Memorial Day and Veterans Day, or do anything in relation there to. Mr. McCoy.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I move that $5,000 be raised and appropriated to be spent by the town manager for the observance of Memorial Day and Veterans Day.
Is there a second? Motion's made in second of Finance Committee recommendation is approval. Discussion? Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. To see if the town will vote to accept as a public way the following described streets as recommended by the planning board and laid out by the selectmen, Massachusetts General Laws 41 and Chapter 41 and Chapter 82 as amended, and shown on certain definitive subdivision plans approved in accordance with rules and regulations governing the subdivision of land in the town of Wilmington, Massachusetts, in which plans are recorded at the Middlesex-North Registry of Deeds, copies of which are on file in the office of the town clerk, and to authorize a selectman to acquire by purchase, gift, or eminent domain such land, slope, or drainage, or other easements as may be necessary to affect the purpose of this article, and further to raise and appropriate, transfer from available funds, or borrow pursuant to any applicable statute, a sum of money to be spent by the town manager with the approval of the Board of Selectmen for the purpose of recording said ways and for the payment of any damages from the fee-taking of land and easements or other related costs. Therefore, in the street we are talking about, ladies and gentlemen, Satcham Circle, and I will spare you my reading the description of Satcham Circle, if that's okay with you. Hearing no objection, or do anything in relation there to. Is there a motion, Mr. Lapore? Thank you, Mr. Moderator.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I move that the following described street be accepted as a public way as recommended by the Planning Board and laid out by the Selectmen, Mass. General Laws, Chapter Forty-One, Chapter Eighty-Two as amended, and shown on the certain definite subdivision plans approved in accordance with the rules and regulations governing the subdivision of land in the town of Wilmington, Mass., in which plans are recorded at Middlesex North Registry of Deeds, and further that the Board of Selectmen are hereby authorized to acquire by purchase, gift, or eminent domain such land, slope, and drainage, or other easements, and set forth below. Satcham Circle. Beginning at point at Northerly-
And, Mr. Lepore, does it read, is this contained in the booklet from there?
Yes.
Great, thank you. I'll accept that as a main motion, and there is no dollar amount, ladies and gentlemen. So we're just voting to accept the, accept Satcham Circle as a approved street. Is there a second? Motion's made in seconded, finance committee recommendation is approval, and Planning Board recommendation is approval. Discussion? This requires a two-thirds. We'll try a voice vote. Those in favor of Article Fifteen signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. Voted and done so unanimously. We're on Article Number Eighteen. To see if the town will vote to amend the revised bylaws of the inhabitants of the town of Wilmington by adding a new section forty-eight to Chapter Five as follows. And I'm not going to read all this to you, ladies and gentlemen. The town clerk has received written notification that the, this article was going to be withdrawn. So I would at this time, unless I hear objection, entertain a motion to either withdraw or pass over. Ms. Waterhouse?
Yes, at this time, I move to take no action on this article as chairman of the conservation.
Is there a second? Motion's made in seconded. Those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. We're on Article Number Twenty-Eight. To see if the town will vote to authorize the Board of Selectmen to request the state legislature to authorize Darryl Senkabar be allowed to have his test results for the Massachusetts Firefighter's Civil Service Exam, April 2004, be allowed for any employment consideration as a firefighter in the town of Wilmington. Notwithstanding the provisions of the General Laws, Rules, or Regulations to the contrary regulating age of applicants for the appointment as a firefighter in the said town, and provided he meets all other requirements, he shall be eligible for certification and appointment to the Fire Department of Wilmington, subject to the appointment of the appointing authority or do anything in relation there to, Mr. Senkabar. Did I pronounce that correctly?
Senkabar.
Senkabar, sorry. If you could just read, I moved that the town vote.
I moved that the town vote.
And does your motion continue as is contained in the booklet?
Yes, it does.
It does. I'll accept that as the main motion. Is there a second? Motion's made in seconded, finance committee recommendation is approval. Discussion? Mr. Senkabar.
My name's Darryl Senkabar. Been in the town just like Mr. Taylor my whole life. Grew up on Harold Ave. Actually bought it and threw Mom out. I've been currently a public safety dispatcher now four and a half years, so I've answered calls from many of you folks, some of the board, and it's just now I'm trying to forward my career and take another step in the, in the town, town of Wilmington, hoping to pursue and become a firefighter. Thank you.
Further discussion, Mr. McDonald?
Yes, I was just wondering if Mr. Senkabar had served in the armed forces at all?
No, that's a negative. I was not eligible.
Is there any particular reason why?
I had medical reasons back then, but that's my, my business, but I was not allowed to.
Okay, thank you. It was just my understanding that military person, personnel be given preference to hiring in these positions, and I was wondering if maybe the manager or maybe the chairman of the Board of Selectmen could give us an answer on that.
Whether military personnel have preference in hiring?
Yeah, it was nice to see this gentleman having prior military experience. I was just wondering, I thought that I heard that military personnel who are retired have preferential treatment in getting these jobs.
Mr. Kyra?
Actually, it's the, these jobs are civil service. I'm sure that's what Mr. McDonald is referring to. When a civil service list is established, all of those people who pass the lit, pass the test are put on that list, and then under Massachusetts law, there's veterans' preference. So if a particular individual who has been certified and passed his exam and is eligible for appointment in a particular community such as Wilmington has a disabled veterans' status, then they would go to the top of the list. And then after disabled veteran status, anybody with a veteran status would come next, and then all others would come, and it'd all be done in order of the marks received.
Could, could the manager tell us if he's going to give first treatment to military personnel, or, or-
I'm not sure, Mr. McDonald, the appointing authority is what we're here to discuss. We're here to discuss whether this gentleman's test results should be allowed to be put on the list. That's all we're here for.
Yeah, I have no problem with that. I have no problem with that.
Good, then we're done. Thank you.
I would just like-
Thank you, Mr. McDonald. Thank you very much. I appreciate it. Thank you. Ms. Waterhouse?
Yes, Judy Waterhouse, 530 Shawshine Avenue. I have known this young man since he was little. It's my humble opinion that this article should pass.
Gentlemen all the way. Seriously, just to reiterate, all this does is get him on the list. The, how the list is formulated is done by the state, and the town manager picks from the list, and he's restricted as how he can draw from the list. So I support this article. These are fairly routine, not subject to a lot of debate, and we just put one through last week. Thank you. And beside the point, he's an outstanding young man and done a fine job for the town.
Further discussion? We're ready for the vote. All those in favor of Article Twenty-Eight is presented, signified by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say no. Voted and done so unanimously. To see if the town will vote to authorize the town manager and/or the Board of Library Trustees to apply for any state funds which may be available to defray the cost of designing, constructing, and/or equipping a new public library, and further to approve the preliminary architectural design of said library at the Swain School Site, being a portion of land shown as a sepsis map sixty-six parcel one, or do anything in relation there to, is there a motion, Ms. Campbell?
I move that the town manager and/or the Board of Library Trustees be hereby authorized to apply for, accept, and expend any state funds which may be available to defray the cost of designing, constructing, and/or equipping a new public library, and further that the preliminary architectural design of such, of said library at the Swain School Site, being a portion of land shown as a sepsis map sixty-six parcel one, be hereby approved.
Is there a second? Motion's made in seconded, finance committee recommendation is approval. Discussion, Ms. Campbell?
I'd like permission, Mr. Moderator, to defer my time to Tina Stewart, Library Director, to do a brief presentation on the new proposal for the library.
Certainly.
Good afternoon. I'm very pleased today to present to you the proposed design of the new library at the Swain School Site. This plan began, we began planning in 1995 for this plan. It has included input from residents, and many of the design features which you're going to see today support the features of our service goals to the Wilmington community. If you remember that, form follows function, and we're going to begin by looking at the floor plans. As you will see, that these design features support the service goals of the town of Wilmington. This is the first floor plan. If you have the brochures that we are giving out at the lobby, there's, these floor plans are also on the back of those brochures. There are two entrances to the library. This is the main entrance on Middlesex Avenue, and this is the parking lot entrance. There are, the main entrance will have a strong civic presence on the Town Common. Primarily will be used by pedestrians, but as you know, majority of people drive to the library. So we wanted to have a very pleasing, welcoming entrance from the parking lot. As you know, the current library, the entrance, the parking lot entrance, is not all that attractive. And this, if you go in from either entrance to the library, you immediately see a librarian for assistance. Entering the library in the, from the parking lot entrance at the current library, you don't, you do not see anyone for assistance until you get well into the library. Also, the person working at that desk could see who is coming into the library from either The activities of, there was a conscious decision made to cluster the more active areas of the library or the noisier areas on this floor. Our long-range planning survey that we did this past summer indicated to us that one of the most important features residents wanted in a new library was quiet study space. So that allowed us to zone the second floor for quiet study. The central spine of the building is where the popular collections are. These are the new books, the bestsellers. So when someone enters the library from this main entrance, those are the first items they will see. Moving back towards the back of the building, these are the browsing collections. They're the high demand, the videos, DVDs, audiobooks, and paperbacks. This area would be the popular magazines and our daily newspapers. There'll be comfortable seating here with natural light overlooking a small green space. The other area on this floor is the children's room. We envisioned this space to be a very popular and vibrant destination for families and young children. This is a one-story bump out of the building. This would be the preschool section of the library, a very exciting place for very young children, for active exploration, for children who have not yet learned how to read but love to look at picture books with their parents. There'd also be a small play area here with the puppet theater. This is a storytime craft room. There is no such feature in our current library for storytime craft. The main conference room is used for that. This will be a much more intimate setting, which we hold our preschool storytimes, and there'll also be craft programs held here. The great thing about this space, that in the afternoon, it can be used for a homework center. And older children can also be studying in this area, right with, again, natural light. Most of the tables are on the perimeter of the building, and the children's reference librarian would be located right there and right near the computers for assistance. On the opposite side of your screen, this is the large meeting room. The decision was made to locate the meeting room for a couple of reasons in this area. People coming to the meeting room have the convenience of going right adjacent to the parking lot, and it also cuts down on traffic going through the rest of the building, thus cutting down on noise going into quiet study areas. It also allows us to close the building, secure the library with the pull-down gate, and allow this meeting room to be open when the library's closed. This meeting room also has a divider, allowing two meetings to go on simultaneously. This space here is the Friends of the Library Room. This is, the Friends of the Library do a lot of fundraising for the Wilmington Library. Many of our programs are thanks to their great assistance to us, and this will allow them to have their ongoing book sale here and any other future fundraising activities, perhaps a gift shop. This is the new teen zone, an area that we're really excited about. It is, will be a welcoming place to have teens come to not only do homework, there'll be computers here, but also a place that will really be designed for their special needs and interests. The, a lot of discussion was among the staff on where to locate the teen zone. It was important to give them a physical separation from the children's room while still maintaining in this, some line of sight from this main service desk, although there is a service librarian here, a teen services librarian, in her absence will be able to still monitor this room. This section here is the staff offices. We have a workroom for children's staff, circulation staff, and technical services acquisition. One of the other features that we found out from our survey that patrons wanted was a 24/7 book return. So if you're coming to the library, you can just drive around to this back area here and deposit your books or AV material 24/7. The elevator, again, is located strategically near this, right across from the main service desk, as is the main staircase. So that will take us up to the second floor. Again, as I mentioned earlier, this area will be zoned for quiet study, and the visitor has different options for quiet study. A more open area here overlooking the atrium, or study tables and study carols overlooking the Bazell Senior Center, again, very close to the windows for natural light. For more of a cozier area here to curl up with the book, nice view of the Town Common overlooking the, out of these windows. And if you want complete solitude, if you have to cram for a promotional exam or a final, there will be four quiet study rooms that will be glass enclosed with two, two desks in, three of the rooms and three desks in one of the rooms. Also, these, we envision that these will be used for tutors and students that we see more of happening, more of those, that kind of activity in the library. This will be a small conference room for a group study, for small committee meetings, or book discussions. This will be a small computer training room, a place where volunteers or staff can give computer classes, everything from basic computer classes to how to do your taxes online, or to how to use genealogy databases. This will be the local history room. It will be a climate-controlled room to protect our Wilmington collection. These are computers here, right near the reference desk for assistance, and the reference collection is in this area. This is, again, a staff area. There's an administrative wing, an office for the reference librarian, and the staff This is the facade of the building facing the Town Common and Middlesex Avenue. It's a traditional design, and I think you can see a glimpse of the Swain. The architects were directed to memorialize the Swain School, and also were directed to work with the chairman of the Historical Commission to develop other ways to memorialize the Swain. Everything from retaining the blackboards in the Swain School and including them in the children's room, or in the teen area, and everything from that option to photo documentation. This is the one-story bump out where the preschool section of the building is, and this, again, is the main entrance, which is a very welcoming area, and this is the meeting room area. This is a one and a half story section of the library. This is the parking lot entrance. Again, it's a much more welcoming, attractive entrance than in our current library. This is a nice arcade which will protect people, especially young children or seniors that are waiting for a ride. Again, here are the windows in the meeting room to give you a sense of perspective, and the teen zone is here, and this is, again, the second floor. This is the site plan. This is, you can see the building footprint here. There's either parking for the Town Common and for the library, and high school parking. There'll be about 182 parking spaces left after the library is built. This is the Bazell Senior Center. I just want to emphasize that, you know, the only building that will be impacted with the construction of the new library is the Swain School. The Bazell Senior Center remains as, as a Fourth of July building. There'll be no impact on either of those buildings.
You've got one, one minute, Ms. Stewart.
In closing, I, that's, it's worked out great. I just wanted to say that this has been a collaborative process, and we are, I think it's a good blueprint to build a, a library for Wilmington that has a high level of functionality, efficiency, flexibility, and certainly will welcome users of all ages for many years to come. Thank you.
Yes, with the lights off, I can't tell who that is. I'm sorry.
Barbara Hooper.
Ms. Hooper, I'm sorry.
Yep. Library trustee. Tina has just reviewed for you the plans for our new library for the Swain School Site. Article Twenty-Six asks for your approval of these plans, and also asks for authorization for the Board of Library Trustees to apply for state grant funds to defray the cost of designing, constructing, and/or equipping the new library. The article does not authorize any funding at this time. Many of you are wondering why we are asking for approval of plans for a new library now when money is tight. It is because grant funds have become available, and we have been told by the Massachusetts Board of Library Commissioners that there probably will not be another opportunity for grant money for at least four or five years. Meanwhile, the costs continue to go up. Meanwhile, the costs continue to go up, and by that time, it will probably cost considerably more for the very same building. Professional estimators have given us a cost figure of $11.6 million based on projected 2007 costs. We expect the grant money will cover approximately one-third of this cost, or about $3.3 million, leaving a cost to the town of $8.3 million. This is like getting a new library at a 30% discount. How often do we get an opportunity like this? I know that $8.3 million is still a great deal of money, but let's break it down to what it would cost for the average homeowner. Our town officials tell us that the average annual tax bill in Wilmington is $3,405. This means, of course, that some pay more, but many of you who live in older houses may pay considerably less. If we apply for a 10-year bond issue, the average taxpayer will pay about $90 in the first year. If we apply for a 20-year bond issue, the first year cost would be about $63. Mike Morris, our town accountant, has given us a table, I'll show you, showing us the impact of the average tax bill, and how the cost will go down with each subsequent year. I know that to some of you, even $90 or $63 seems like a lot. But if you think of it in monthly terms, this breaks down to about $750 a month on the $90 annual tax bill, or only $525 a month for the $63 annual tax bill. Many of us are apt to spend this kind of money on something we didn't plan to buy when we go to the grocery store or the drugstore and think nothing of it. It would be less than the cost of a weekly bag of candy or a box of cookies. So what does a yes vote on Article 26 mean, and what happens next? If we vote yes on Article 26, we will have approved the preliminary drawings which you just saw here, and will have given the Board of Library Trustees authorization to apply for any construction grants that are available. Once again, we are not asking for any funding at this time. In July of this year, we will find out if our application has been approved. Once we know how much money we can expect to receive, then we'll come back to you with a special town meeting to authorize funding the balance of the cost in the new library. This will require a two-thirds vote at town meeting. There will also be a debt exclusion vote at the ballot, which will have to be approved by a majority of those who come out to vote. A debt exclusion vote is not the same as a two-and-a-half, as a Proposition 2.5 override. There's a lot of confusion about this. A debt exclusion vote approves a one-time, temporary increase in the tax rate to pay for a capital project such as a library. A Proposition 2.5 override, on the other hand, results in a permanent tax increase in order to run the everyday business of the town. We are not, this is not what we are asking. Once the library is paid for, the debt will go away, and so will the taxes to pay for it. A new library will give us areas for quiet study, comfortable reading areas with better lighting, more computer space with wireless access, a larger improved children's area, a separate and larger area for teens away from the children's area, a 24-hour book drop, meeting space for small groups for tutoring, better handicapped accessibility, plus a large meeting room that can be used when the rest of the library is not open. Plus, it will also be a more, and more energy-efficient building than the one we're in now. We envision the new library as a place that will have programs to offer for all ages, from toddlers to elders, a place where people can gather, or just come in to browse and read a good book, a new magazine, or a newspaper, a place that will be a source of civic pride for years to come. I urge you all to vote yes on Article 26.
Further discussion, yes ma'am.
Thank you. My name is Taryn Shaneman. I am a homeowner on Beeching Avenue. I grew up in Wakefield, went to high school and college in Connecticut, and then moved to New York City, where I earned my first master's degree from Brooklyn College. I returned to Massachusetts in 1991 and earned my MBA from Babson in 1997. By now, you may have guessed where I stand regarding a library. To me, a library is an important part of the fabric of the community. A library is an investment in the future. I moved to Wilmington in 1998. Wilmington has changed a lot for the better since then, with a new municipal building, the new train station, a cleaned-up Main Street, as examples. As Wilmington continues to evolve, and it will, I see a new library as a key part of that evolution. People considering moving to Wilmington will judge our community, among other things, on its public resources. A new library will attract people to Wilmington who are interested in education, and culture, and community. A new library will add to the growth of our real estate values, and, as a result, our tax revenue base. Long story short, I think the thing to do is move forward with the new library now. Thank you.
Further discussion, yes ma'am.
Joanne Chukas, 7th Street. I've lived in Wilmington for 46 years. I've seen this town grow good, and I've seen it grow bad. We're voting for a library or to apply to the state for funds. If we pass this and the state does not okay it, we then have to come up with the full $11 million. Now, no matter what you listen to, overall, the cost of this library for the total bill will run every taxpayer on an average of $900. Meter it out over how many years, I don't care, but that is the bill you will be paying at a time when money is tough. I have also questioned, where are the funds coming from for these architects and engineering plans? Because we voted this down last year. And now, we have a new set of plans, a new site. I want to know, what fund are we using to put this in front of us? This has to be paid for. Architects are not cheap. And that question has not been answered. I asked the question before. Why can't we add on a floor, or add to the present building? I was told, the engineers and architects said this could not be done. When we approved this building originally, we were told, "You will never have to build another new library." Because you can go up a floor, there's plenty of land to add on. Now, I requested at the time, have you gone back to the original engineers and architects to find out their thoughts on this? No, you didn't. You've got new engineers, they don't want to add on. They don't want to put another story on. They want a whole, brand-new, beautiful building, they can put their name on, that they built this in the town of Wilmington. They get all this publicity, and we get the bill. Now, why, the committee is telling us what they think we need. Computer rooms to study in. Have you ever been to the Tewksbury Library? On their second floor, they have a whole bank of six or eight rooms for students to study in, desks, computers, enclosed. Kids don't go there. I've been at our library when the high school lets out. The kids get in their cars, on their buses, and they go home. Number one why? They all have their own computers. They go home, they get a cold drink and a snack, go to their computer, and do their work. In the library? Uh-uh. No food or drink. They also get on their cellphones. If they have a problem, they call up a friend. No cellphones in the library, not allowed. How can you say you're going to have a relaxed, you want sofas, you want chairs, you want end tables? I go home to read. Most of the time, I read in bed. So why am I going to stay at the library to read? If I found the book I want, I get it and I leave. Parking for 100 cars is ludicrous. I have never, ever, ever used the overflow parking at the present library. The only day it's really busy there is when they have the children's reading room and the parents are there with the kids. Then you might have to use the lower parking. And I've never used it, and I don't know of any of the people that I know who go to the library as constantly as I do have had a problem with parking. We don't have to pay this bill for two years, but rest assured, you will pay the bill. Please consider, when you vote, don't look at that and say, "Oh, isn't that beautiful? I think I'll vote for it." Think about your pocketbook. We just had a 9% tax increase on your real estate, and that was pretty hefty for everybody. It was long overdue, I don't resent it, we have to pay our way. But pay for this? I don't think so. And I have requested, and I have yet to see, any plans presented for additions, for a second floor. I've never seen anything comprehensive. All I've been told is, "No, copy down." Engineers said, "Copy down." Those are new engineers. Please, go and contact the people who built this building and find out what their ideas were to begin with. Do us a favor, save us some money. Thank you.
Further discussion, Mr. Costa.
Steve Costa, 120 Faulkner. I'm a member of the Master Plan Committee. I'm not going to speak upon as, for the Master Plan Committee. I'm speaking as a private resident, and also as a member that was part of our presentation to the Master Plan Committee on October 7, 2004. I have some pros and cons about the library. As a young voter, a young resident, seeing all these old, these elderly people, how they're, how they're suffering, and I mean elderly people are suffering to get by on the tax bill. How can you go and ask an elderly person that's on a fixed income to pay more, and more, and more, and more, and more? You only can bleed the stone so much before it's out, so... But I'm going to refer to something that was in the master plan that was voted on this very floor. Section 10.7, all right, of the master plan. Now, this is pretty good English here. Now, this, two years ago, when we voted down the library, all right, this plan was thrown out the door. There was no consideration of the plan, we were going to the Whitfield site, and the Whitfield site only. That's what we were told. Now, two years down the line, now we're at the recommendation of the master plan. Now, everybody that's lived in this town as long as I have, or longer, I've lived here for 27 years of my life, has always known the library to be at the Town Common area. And this is the best line of the master plan I can think of of the library. The library anchors the Town Common, like a department store anchors a shopping mall. Two years ago, that was not considered on this floor. It was to go outside of the common area. This is a document that's well-worked. A lot of people worked hard on this document. I read this document, and I hope, and I really do hope, that the consideration of two years ago was not against this document, because this is only a guideline, it's not, "You have to do it right here." We'd like to have you keep the character of the town in the library there. All of a sudden, now, we're here. So the intentions of the library committee were to move the library to the Swain site. "Oh, I'm all for, I'm all, I'm all for new buildings and new library. Yeah, I like the new library plan, it's beautiful." I go to the, I go to the library almost a daily basis to study and do reference. I have used the overflow parking lot. There is a little bit of a demand on the daytime when the young children go in for reading programs. I really think that people should really think about what they're getting into. I've heard comments of children. My question is to any educator in this room, if I have a seven-year-old child, and in 10 years, he graduates from a high school, from this high school, what is he going to gain from a, a new library? Or if we vote this down, and we vote to keep the existing library? What is he going to lose? Absolutely nothing, I, my honest opinion. I walk in that library at 2:45, 3 o'clock in the afternoon, those kids are on the computers, they're not studying references, they're chatting with their friends, which is not allowed in the library. If we mandate the people, the kids doing what they're not supposed to be doing on those computers and use them for reference purposes only, then we would have no problem getting on a computer to do some reference. All right? These are all points that have been put against, put up. All right? The education value in this town is very, very good for some kids. Let's start by improving the libraries in the schools, because in the summertime, they close at 5 o'clock. You think a kid in the middle of summer vacation is going to go to the library every day? You're incorrect. The library is used quite a bit, utilized by the adult circulation. I, and as I say, utilized by the adults. People have said, "Oh," I've heard people say, "I can't get a book, and we're in a, we're in a communities where we can get out."
15 seconds, Mr. Costa.
I urge everybody to seriously consider what they're voting for. Thank you.
Ms. Kane, and I apologize, ladies and gentlemen, I misplaced my glasses at the Red Sox game the other day, and I'm having trouble picking everybody. I thought the umpire could use it more than I did, but, uh, no, Ms. Kane.
Oh. Peggy Kane, 40, Hanover Street. I came up originally to, I'm going to have to change what I was saying, but what I was going to say, I originally came up, or add to, I came up here to tell you about the fact that the library and the school, I'm on the school committee, that the library and the school have become such partners, and if you were able to attend any of the functions that have been ongoing with the library and the school in the last two years, especially since the library was able to hire Natalie DeMers, you would be so happy for your children that they are getting the quality education that they are getting. So I really want to impress upon you that to have the library, yes, I was for the Whitfield site, there's a podomy that still believes the Whitfield site was the site to have, but now people have compromised. There have been multiple, multiple open forums. There have been, there were nights on WCTV. There's been so much information in the paper. And I have to go on to the fact of the cost. Of course, that's a problem for all of us. I am now on a fixed income, having retired last June, so I understand that argument totally. But if we're only, the lady before, previously, who said, "Think about it, you're going to pay $900 for a new library." When I look at that, when I think about what's going to come from having a new library in this town, the amount of education, the amount of camaraderie, the social events that we'll be able to participate in, for $900 over 10 years, I would be happy to do that. When you think about the library, no one has mentioned yet the fact that you can go there and you can get videotapes, you can get CDs, you don't have to pay the blockbuster prices, you can save your money right there and put your money into the library. And the other thing is, if people hadn't had foresight 20 years ago and built the library that we have, if the community didn't have foresight to build the middle school that we have, and the public, public safety building that we have, where would we be at this point? People did this before us, and they, they bit the bullet, and they put these things forward for our town. And I just want to add one thing. Recently, I was at a forum for Mass Association of School Committees, and Bruce Tar was there. And Bruce Tar mentioned to the other people from Linfield, and Newburyport, and Topsfield, and all around the North Shore, who have user fees, who have, oh, athletic fees, who had drama fees. In Linfield, the kids pay $125 every time they want to participate in a play. I was blown away by that. I would never have expected that from Linfield. But what Senator Tar said to us was, when we mentioned, Marilyn and I mentioned, we were from Wilmington, he said, "That community has a magician for a town manager. That administration has been able to hold the cost. Wilmington has none of those things." And as a person from the private sector, the private Peggy, I would like to say thank you to our town administration, to our Board of Selectment, to our Finance Committee, to all of the people who have enabled us to live at the high quality we live. And we are not among the highest taxpayers in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, believe it or not. So when you look at those, when you look at all of those things, I think we need to have foresight, and I hope that you will join me and vote for this. And in the future, I hope you'll join me and vote for a new library. And in the future, I hope you'll join me and vote for a new library, because I think we deserve it in this town. So, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Hi, my name is John Goggan. I live at 28 Indian Road. And to answer some of the previous speakers, I have two teenage daughters who have been frequent users and even regular users of the library since about the ages of three years old. So, certainly, they've appreciated the library over the years, and now that they're getting older, certainly I want the opportunity to be there for some of the younger parents' children as well. One of my main objections, and I did oppose the first plan, was the location. And this was not because of the library itself, but because of safety and access issues at the Whitfield location. Certainly, having the library in the current location, or the proposed location, mitigates a lot of those issues, I believe. Certainly, I know of high schoolers who use the library. Certainly, students from the abundant life use the library. One of them is my daughter, at least once a week. I believe that, that, you know, certainly those objections are now gone, and I'm sure a lot of people had those objections. I still have concerns, and I did, as I did before, and someone would try to be answered about whether we would need a two-and-a-half override some, at some point in the project. Certainly, we don't want to put this money into the project and then later not have the final process approved. I'm at the age now where in about 20 years, I'm going to be looking toward retirement. So, certainly, I'm looking forward to be concerned, and, you know, the more we could get from state grants and funding would be better. I have one issue, and I'm going to change hats slightly. I am the chairman of the Town Republican Committee as well, and one of the things I wanted to ask was about meeting spaces. In the past, there has been a rule, since we're getting more meeting spaces and we're paying with the town funds, there has been a rule from the commission that no political organizations are allowed to meet in the library. And I question that, because my organization is elected at town ballot. And, you know, we, why would be excluded, the Democrats be excluded, the Libertarians? You know, so I would ask the, maybe the library director, is if we're going to guarantee that there would not be any type of discrimination in viewpoints, either materials, meetings, or whatever, within the library, you know, whether it be religious, whether it be racial, whether it be that type of thing. And I know that they, they do their best, but I'm particularly concerned with the discrimination, possibly with political affiliation.
The question is, what will the meeting policy be at the new library? Ms. Stewart.
Yes, the Board of Trustees have a policy that governs the use of the meeting room, and the speaker raises a good question. We really want to be inclusive rather than exclusive, and they have reviewed their policy. And we do allow groups like you, the Republican Committee, to use it now. It has been reviewed. And you make a very good point, it is open to all people to use the meeting room, and hopefully we'll have more opportunities with the new meeting room.
Thank you very much.
Mr. McCoy.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. First of all, I want to congratulate Mrs. Stewart and the Board of Library Trustees. I know this is a cause that they're in favor of, and I know they really, truly care about their community as well as everybody here. And I know Mrs. McFadden, we've had several conversations over the last couple of months, that's when we started to meet each other, especially at the 275th anniversary. And I know it's dear to your heart, and we had a great conversation about that. I think it's no secret to anybody here that I'm opposed to the construction of a new library. But I just want to make a couple of points, and I want to try to come to some happy medium here. Back in 1999, as I was running for reelection to the Board of Selectment, no public official worked harder or closer for debt exclusion for the new public safety building and the new middle school. Those were necessities, and we desperately needed it, and as you can see now, several years later, it was well worth the money. That debt will not be paid off until the year 2011, so we're still paying that somewhat of a mortgage. And I want residents to really know that, over the past three years, you know, the economy has been tight, local aid, we've lost $5.5 million from local aid that would usually come to the town, and right now we'd have probably about $10 million in the bank, and that's not the case today. And the economy is cyclical. And I just want people to realize that, you know, as I'm opposed to the construction of the library, I understand that this is not an appropriation. And I want people to know that I'm not going to vote for or against this article right now, but I will make this promise, and I made this pledge before, during, and after the election, that if this article is to pass, and I'm a man of my word, I will vote as a member of the Board of Selectment to call a special town election to allow the process to take place. And if that article is to pass, and I really believe we need to follow the process, I really think it has to come to a ballot box, to let, really, let the whole community as a whole vote on it. And I make this pledge and promise to you now, that if it passes at that special town meeting, I believe the members of the board will call a special town meeting in the fall, and then we're going to have to call a special election for this particular proposal. You need four out of the five selectmen for it actually to appear on the ballot. So, even if you vote today to support it, and it gets to a special town meeting, and you vote to support it then, all you need is at least two members of the Board of Selectmen not to put it on the ballot. But I want to let you know I'm a fair person. I make you this pledge and promise, I will vote to allow it on the ballot. I'll be opposed to the construction of a library, but I really believe it, the time is now. We've gone back, over the last three years, we had a site, not a site, now we're talking about another site. I think we should put it to rest, let the process take its place, let the residents finally have the say at the ballot box. I don't think anybody can be any fairer than that, and I hopefully, one thing, that if we can come out of this to agree to disagree, we'd be better as a community. And I think this whole process has been very civil, and I take my hat off to them, they've done a great job, and we had some really good civil conversations, and that's what it's about. Be in civil, agree to disagree, and I think we should move forward and then just end it. And I want to be fair to everybody. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
I'm Jim LeMay, 25 Shadleene Drive. I've lived in town for a number of years now, and I think the first thing we did after we moved in is we went to visit the local library. I think we were encouraged by the volume size, but we were a little discouraged about the state of the building. You know, not that they don't do everything they can with it, but the age of the building, I think, limits some of the constraints for some of the services that they would like to provide, such as computer use, which obviously weren't around when the building was constructed. And it doesn't look like they were taking into account in the design from the, you know, children's computers being placed in like common areas, you know, basically by the stairs or in hallways, something along those lines. I, I think it's an important feature of a new building to incorporate the flexibility of design for the use of computers and expanded CD collection being displayed properly, DVDs, so you don't have to rent them from a blockbuster. My most common reason for going to libraries is to get books on CDs or books on tapes, so I can listen to them during my long commute. And those are like 40 bucks a pop at Barnes &amp; Noble. I'm just saying that it's a lot cheaper to get them at the library, and it's something that I appreciate being able to do as a resident in the town. And I also appreciate their collection, but I also understand that their collection size is somewhat limited by their building. I think the building that they're proposing has been identified as something that would satisfy town needs for the next 20 years, and I understand the cost is something, a bit of a sacrifice, $90 a year for 10 years, total of 900, present value not considered. But it's a sacrifice I'm willing to make for the future of the community, my daughter, the kids, and I think the ongoing programs at the library that they offer, not only for adults and for kids, but also for teenagers. I think Natalie's done a great job bringing in the teenagers and conducting programs of interest to give the teenagers a community meeting space, somewhere where they can interact with one another without, you know, being outside unsupervised, you know, with the potential to get into trouble or something along those lines. I think it's a great atmosphere for teenagers to be in. I think it's a better atmosphere for kids to be in, but, and I think the quiet study areas, the computer use, many of the functions that are going to be incorporated into the new library design, I think would enhance the experience for everybody, all the library users in town, no matter what their age. And I understand that many people have computers at home. For those elderly that do not have a computer at home, I think the library offers a great choice. You can maintain an email account, you can check your email daily, more than once a day, something along those lines. Personally, I always seem to end up in the overflow lot, because I don't go to the library between the hours of 10:00 and 3:00 PM, 10:00 AM and 3:00 PM. I always, I'm always there at night, usually when there's a program going on. And when there is a program going on, I'm in the lower lot. That's just the way it is. In terms of, one of the other things that was brought up, in terms of the current libraries supposedly being the holy grail of buildings that would meet the town's needs for the foreseeable future, I think everyone in town understands what Title V is, in terms of how that applies to your septic system, and how the rules have changed. You can't build a septic system now the way you did before Title V was passed. It's my understanding from the meetings I've attended that similar rules have also changed regarding public safety buildings, or public buildings, I should say, for safety concerns.
15 seconds, sir.
I would recommend everyone to vote for the, for this amendment, as it allows us to apply for grant funding. Appreciate your vote on yes on Article 26. Thank you.
Further discussion, Ms. Sullivan.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. As being one of the people that was in the forefront of rescinding Article 29, too, or maybe three years ago, it seems like it was quite some time ago, I just want to take this opportunity to commend the people that have come forward, the library trustees, Tina Stewart, Kathy McFadden, coming forward in, with a very much more inclusive process. I've had conversations with many people with this, have attended many meetings. I think that this plan that's being presented to this body today is a much better plan than was presented a couple of years ago. It's much more within the vision of the master plan. I like it much better. If this town decides to build a new library, I think that the best possible place for that library would be the Swain site. That being said, as through the process, I have voiced my concerns on the financial situation of the town. Wilmington's not alone. These are tough times for us. I, although I will stand up in favor of the article today, does not mean that when it comes to special town meeting, and when it comes to the ballot box, that I will support this proposal. The Board of Selectmen has been waiting for a capital improvement plan, which we have yet to get. I think that we need to look at the long-range planning for the town before we make any decisions, especially considering the financial hardship that we could be in, in the future. The senior citizens are under great strain. Many people are having a hard time paying their taxes. We had to increase a considerable amount of the taxes this past year, and I don't know what next year will bring. That being said, I want to say once again that I do commend the people that have brought this forward. The process was much better. I understand why they're doing it. They're doing it for the best interests of the town, and therefore I think that they deserve their day in court, and that is why I will stand up today and support this article. But I want to make it very clear that when it comes down to the, to the debt exclusion, my opinion will be different. Thank you.
Further discussion, Ms. Stewart.
Charlotte Stewart, 35, Adams Street. I'm a member of the League of Women Voters. The League of Women Voters supports Article 26, as we did a similar article 36 years ago when the present library was constructed. As we all know, library services and everything else has changed in the past 36 years. What was wonderful then is inadequate now. On a personal note, I have voted for many capital expenditures throughout the years, the present library, a fire department, a police department, the new public safety building, and many schools. Looking back, you know, I couldn't afford to do any of these. Thank you.
Further discussion, yes, sir.
Jeffrey Nussbaum, 288 Shawshin Avenue. I really think this is a great opportunity to make an investment in our community for the new library. As Ms. Sullivan said, there was a long process, a good process, with tremendous involvement from all areas of the town. We've talked about the state grant. Town residents have identified a long list of needs for a new library that just are not practical to have in the current library. And, and most of that is space. And the new library is much larger, the proposed library will be much larger, and will be able to accommodate these needs for additional books, space for computers, space for teens, space for children's programs, space for quiet study, space for tutoring, space for meetings. These are all things that the town residents have identified that we need in a new library, and much as we like the existing library, it's just not practical to add them. By the way, much of my parking is in the lower lot, because when my kids and I come to the library, and we do that several times a week, that's where we need to park. My children are in first grade and fourth grade. Each time we go to the library, we come home with a very heavy load of books. If we need to wait another four or five years, if we need to wait another three years after that for construction, my children will be in high school, my children will be finishing up high school, and that's too long to wait. We're ready for a new library now, for my family and for yours and for all the residents of this town. Mrs. Stewart has prevented, presented a plan for a beautiful new facility that meets the needs, the current, the town's current needs and our future needs. I would urge you all to make this fine investment in our community and vote yes for the new library.
Mr. West.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. One thing I'd like to remind the residents regarding taxes is that we just voted for 200, on an average, of $297 increase in our current tax bill. The library proposal that we're looking at is adding another $90 a year. We don't know what the future's going to bring, and I think at this time, I, I feel that what we should have done was a compromise, as opposed to just saying, "I don't like the Cadillac at the Whitfield school, I like the Cadillac at the Swain school, maybe it's not a Cadillac we should be buying." My opinion is, for what it's worth, is that I recommended, as a resident several years ago, to look at the adjoining properties. We got letters from both of them. One of the owners, the owner of the little house next to the funeral home, said that she was not interested in selling her property. The, the estate of the, the family of the other side indicated that they would be in favor of selling that property to the town for the construction of a library. I know Mr. McCoy indicated at one point that, that putting some sort of an addition on that site would probably be around $4 million. I mean, I, again, I don't know if that's a true figure or not, but to me, that's somewhat of a compromise. You know, as far as what we could do with that site, I'm not sure if we could add on a third story to the current building or not. I mean, I've heard things on both sides. The current facility, what you could do is that, what we're using as a meeting room today could be bookshelves and use as, as active book space, maybe your teen center, add some computers to that area. The other side, on the addition, you could put a, if you wanted to put some sort of a conference room, and whatever we wanted to do with, with an addition, you probably put a decent-sized addition on that. The other thing I'd like to talk about real quickly is safety. You're saying that, you know, people are saying, "Well, gee, the Swain school site is safer than the, than the Whitfield school site." But you've got to remember, the kids from either the high school or the abundant life have to cross over the common at two separate areas. You know, and probably the last thing I'll say, or the last couple of things real quick is that, one, we're looking next year at the possibility of a substation in North Wilmington at a projected cost of $1,000,000 and $1,500,000, which is going to come from our pockets and a projected maintenance fee, excuse me, maintenance fee of, I think it's $750,000 a year. It just seems to me that, you know, what we need to do is we need to get an idea of all of our priorities. As Selectwoman Sullivan said, that, you know, we need, you know, we've asked the manager and the town administration for a capital improvement plan to look at all of our priorities. You know, the library might be on that list, is it number one? I don't know. I mean, personally, I think a substation in North Wilmington is probably higher up than a library, but that's, that's just my own opinion. But, you know, I, I think by voting for this project, if you're truly for this project, I would vote for it. I'm, I'm voting against it, because I'm not in favor of the project, but I would suggest is that if you're not in favor of the project, with all due respect to the library Board of Trustees and all their hard work, by voting for the project and then ultimately voting against it at a town meeting, I think you're giving them false hope. If you, if you're really, truly committed for it, vote for it, and that's what you're going to vote at town meeting. But if you're not for it, I would recommend that you not vote for it today. And, and the last thing that I'll just say is that, you're looking at, you know, $6 a month or $10 a month, that's, that's six... or $10 a month, that's $6 or $10 or whatever that you're not going to have for something else. So, I'm going to vote against it, you guys do what you want, and like I said, that's my recommendation.
Ms. Yuric.
Anne Yuric. I first want to express my appreciation to Mr. McCoy and Ms. Sullivan for being very reasonable and fair to the community with their positioning today. A year's vote today does not commit the town to spending $11 million. It is not that easy. There will be at least two more votes. And I don't believe that the cost necessarily will stay at $90 per year. I believe our debt decreases each and every year, so yes, for many of you, it'll start at $90 per year. For many of you, it's less than that, and I believe that that cost will go down for each and every year of that debt. I, too, have used overflow parking, and I would love to stay at the library and meet with people in the library, not necessarily for political purposes, but for community discussions. That's why the people want this library, so we can get together in a place that is very different, and I don't mean this in a cynical way, I don't think, that is very different from town hall Board of Selectmen sessions. That's what I'm looking for, a rational, reasonable, reasonable discussion about community matters. We have students and children using the library today. It is not sufficient for them. We need to improve the place where we send our children and our students to again discuss what is happening in their lives, in their communities. I believe it when the Board of Trustees tell me the building is not structurally supportable for additions, and I am so sorry that you feel misled, but I think information has changed since 1969. That's why it is no longer possible to add on to our present library. A new library, it is my belief, will serve us for 60 years, just as the Whitfield Library would have. This present library is no longer serving our needs after a very short 35 years. Libraries are a basic service, and I congratulate Tewksbury for everything they are doing for themselves, and I am very glad that they're happy and content. We are not Tewksbury. We need a new library. Thank you.
Mr. Sagal. Mr. Sagal.
Thank you very much. Again, name is Carl Sagal. I have attended many of the open forums, the public forums. I'm also on the Master Plan Committee. I'm speaking as a private citizen. I don't usually use either parking lot because I have a very unique conveyance. A number of things have been brought up today that I wanted to throw out for you to consider. One of the issues, all of the issues have been brought up, I think all of the issues on both sides are very valid arguments. Today, we have to decide whether we're going to go forward down this particular road that later on will require several other votes to continue on that road, or whether we decide not to go down that road and choose some other path. That's the way I see it. One of the issues that was brought up in the presentation was that the doors would be visible from the center desk. It's a great idea. I can see that door from here. If the desk is in a huge building and you are three-quarters of the way across the building and the door is visible to you, there's a lot of things in the way. So, having direct line of sight and having control over a situation are two very different The issue was brought up about how the taxes will go up to pay this and then the taxes will go down again. Many things go up and down. Taxes are not one of them. I own two houses in this town. One is a three-family investment home, one is my personal residence. My personal residence, the taxes have gone up $666 in the last three years. My investment property, the taxes have gone up $883 in the last three years. I happen to have all the public records for the taxes of all of the selectmen and some of the other people in town. No one's taxes have gone down in the last 10 years, with the exception of one individual on the board. That was one time seven years ago. People coming into the community will look at public facilities. That's true. Not just the library. They'll look at our little round town hall. They'll look at the one fire station. They will look at many things in addition to the library. That having been said, I think this is a wonderful library. I think it's a great facility. It answers the questions and the needs of a great deal of people. I saw a television show on Bill Gates's house. Very nice house. I would love to live there. I can't afford it. I've been to the houses of some of the people on the board and some of the other people in town who have more means than I. Very nice houses. I would love to live there. I can't afford them. The talk has been talking, people have talked about saving money at Blockbuster. Go get videos, get books on tape, get all these different things at the library. I do that on a regular basis. My children do that on a regular basis. My wife does that on a regular basis. None of us have yet paid for this building. So, those things exist because we have a very good library staff with very good programs.
Fifteen seconds.
We don't need that big of an improvement. We need an improvement in the facility, but I don't think we need this much improvement. Thank you very much.
Mr. Hayden.
With all due respect, I don't know what kind of message we're going to send to our kids when we're talking about $6 to $10 a month being too much to spend. I mean, you spend $6 to $10 a month in a heartbeat on more things than you could ever imagine. So, if we're truly talking about $6 to $10 a month, and I'm not sure of that, but I think a positive vote here today would allow more discussion, more analysis, to look into whether that is $6 to $10 a month. If it is, I'm going to pay it right now. A few things about libraries. We're not just talking about a building. We're talking about some of the basis for our livelihoods. Reading is a fundamental skill of mankind, and libraries promote reading. Libraries foster reading as a way to learn the new technologies. I started in computers when I was 16 years old, and today, everybody out there using PCs, you're probably only using about 5% of the capability of those PCs, and PCs have been around for 30 years. So, we're talking about a library that's going to last us a long time. We're talking about something that the kids today and the kids tomorrow are all going to get a chance to use. I've got 12 grandchildren living in Wilmington, and I certainly want those grandchildren to have all the aspects of a good education they possibly get. A library is part of that. Libraries in concert with the Internet are a powerful force. I've got some friends that would say to you, "We're not going to need libraries, we're not going to need books. We're going to walk around with a Palm Pilot in our hand, we're going to draw up into Google, because Google is capturing all that information somewhere in space, and that's where we'll do our reading." I don't think that's the case. Go over to Barnes &amp; Noble, take a look at the parking lot. It's always full. You know, on a plane, everybody's reading a book. Anybody that's got any kind of interest in finding out about new things and so forth are doing reading. Libraries are important to maintaining our collective wisdom. Those books contain, those shelves containing all the books aren't there just to gather dust. People actually do go and try to educate themselves and learn and enjoy from reading. They're open to all, and they offer something for all. I think that the better the library we have, the more capabilities we have in that library, I think we're going to draw more people to the library. And I say that because one of the things I'm concerned about is the decreasing socialization. I mean, people are scrolling away in their houses. They're not talking to their neighbors. They may not even know their neighbors. You need to have ways to get people out and about and give them meeting rooms to go to, organizations to go to. I want the kids to be able to have places to go. They're getting kicked out of the malls now, as you saw on the news up in New Hampshire. They're going to have to have someplace to go. It'd be great if they decided to go to the libraries. Libraries are an investment in the community and its future, and I think that we ought to vote today. We're not voting a dime. Can you imagine telling your kids that you voted negatively today? Tell your grandkids you voted negatively today when there wasn't a dollar involved? We're voting today to carry the process on. We'll find out how much the state will give us. Maybe we can flush out that $6 to $10 a month number and see if it's okay. Maybe some of the proponents of adding on to the current library will get their pencils out and find out, is that really feasible? I've read a few letters in the town crier. That's fine. People have ideas, maybe $2 million, maybe $4 million, maybe whatever, but nobody's done any real work on it. The library committee and the group and so forth and the consultants have taken a look at the old library to find out if it's feasible or not. It apparently isn't, but a vote today would give us more time to decide that. It'd be a shame to shut down the dialogue. I think Selectman McCoy was very articulate when he said, you know, he isn't necessarily in favor of the library, not because he doesn't like libraries, because he's concerned about the physical status of the town, but he's willing to go ahead and make that vote and give us time to carry it on.
Fifteen seconds.
And further explore it. Thank you very much. I urge you to vote yes today.
Further discussion, yes, ma'am.
Thank you. Orianna Lopatka, 9 West Street. I would like to ask, if this new library is built, what is the intended use of the current library that will be vacated?
Sorry, ma'am, I had a side discussion. I'm sorry, a different question. I'm sorry, could you repeat that?
Repeat. If this new library is built, what is the intended use of the current library that will be vacated?
Mr. Kira.
There's been no final decision on that. That'll have to be made, again, by the townspeople with the input and the direction of the administration and the Board of Selectmen and the Finance Committee. Certainly, one of the areas that we've looked at for that particular building is in conjunction with the school department. The school department is in the, their administration building is in the Roman House, and it's really inadequate. If we were to consider moving some of those folks that are in various buildings who work for the central administration, the school department, that would open up more space in the schools. That's one aspect, or that's one option, but there has been no final decision made. I can assure you that the town needs additional space, and any new facility, there's 15,000 square feet there, would provide the town with an opportunity to do something else there.
Thank you.
Further discussion, yes, ma'am.
Thank you. Nancy Yentile, 45 Shawshine Ave. I, like most people here, have a very strong opinion about whether or not this is the time that Wilmington should receive a brand-new, state-of-the-art, $11 million library. I applaud all of our select people and Mr. Sagal and so many others who have so eloquently said that the vote will ultimately come to the entire town and not just now. I do have a couple of questions, though, and the first one is, I don't really fully understand why we have to have a vote here at town meeting to just apply for state funds, where that doesn't really say we're going to get this library. Could you please explain that first for me?
Mr. Kira.
It's a requirement of the State Board of Library Commissioners. In order to, in order to be eligible for the grant, you have to go through certain steps. And so, in order to be eligible for what we believe would be $3.3 million in grant funds, we have to demonstrate to the State Board of Library Commissioners that the townspeople have voted approval for the site and approval to apply for the grant. So, it's strictly the state's requirements that we are trying to comply with.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
So, that interpretation, to me, would mean that if we do vote to go ahead and apply for this, we are showing a little more approval to the Board of Trustees and all the people that are putting this forward to us? Are we showing more approval by voting to go ahead and apply?
May I, Mr. Moderator?
Absolutely.
What we're doing is we're showing that, we're telling the Board of Library, the State Board of, the State Library Commission, we're telling them that the town of Wilmington is interested in going forward in the process for the construction of a new library. And the reason why we wanted to do it this way is so that we would know exactly how much dollars would be involved. What will happen, as Mrs. Stewart spoke about in July, and I think Mrs. Hooper as well, in July, the Board of Library Commissioners will make their decisions among all of the communities that are going through this application process, and they will decide whether to give Wilmington a grant and if so, how much. Now, if the grant is $3.3 million, as we believe it would be, based upon the formulas that they set forth, then we would then know that the town would need to appropriate, if it wanted to go forward, $8.3 million. And as Mr. McCoy had said earlier, there is a process for that with two addition, with really three additional votes. A vote by the Board of Selectmen, and then votes at town meeting and at the ballot box. So, unless, if we voted against this today, then we would not be eligible for the $3 million, at the $3.3 million. I think that's as simply stated as I can. If there's a no vote today, then we will not be eligible for the $3.3 million. If there is a yes vote, we will be eligible, and then we will have to wait and see whether we would get it, and then determine the course from that point.
I'm so sorry, but I have one more question in that regard. If we do vote to apply, and if we are accepted or we qualify for those funds, does that knock another town out of the contention for those funds? And would we be putting forward the impression that all of us here want that library and think we can afford it when there are so many in town who don't?
No, because what will happen is they have an entire list of towns that would be eligible, and all the money may not be available immediately, and so that they would do it on priority. This happens all the time with the State Board of Library Commissioners. This is the way, the way it works, and if a town does not appropriate the funds, then that town would go off the list, and the next towns in line would move up.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Mr. Woodbury.
Thank you for recognizing me, Mr. Moderator. Well, I guess the reason we're all here is because of what me and another person, Suzanne Sullivan, who's now a selectman, started back about two years ago. A lot of people have made headway politically because of some of the work that we laid ground for in our original work with changing the vote that was taken two years ago at the 2002 meeting by calling for a special election. And the reason we called for the special election is we're not satisfied. We weren't satisfied with what was being presented to us. We weren't satisfied with a lot of things that were being done by the initial studies, by TAPE. We weren't satisfied with the design, we weren't satisfied with the location. There are a lot of things we weren't satisfied with. So, we wanted to get the information out to the people. We decided the best way to do it was to call for a special town meeting, and by that, we'd get people more interested, we'd get more people involved, we'd get a whole consensus on what it is we wanted to achieve. What we wanted to achieve is we wanted the architectural company to take a step back and actually look at what it is the community needed to have for its new facility. We knew that we needed to upgrade the facilities at the library. The current library does not meet today's standards in any way, through size, through volumes, through access. There is nothing there that is current for our needs today, other than the fact that it's there. I think that the TAPE this time has listened to our needs. I think that the library trustees have listened to our needs. They've gone before the Master Plan Committee, before the Board of Selectmen, asking for site location. I think it would behoove us to move ahead with this process and make a decision to let them move to have a town-wide vote on the issue where we can finalize where it is we're going to be. I fully support- on the issue, where we can finalize where it is we're going to be. I fully support this movement by the library trustees to bring forward to the State Department, so we may get funding. It gives us an opportunity to move ahead. It doesn't stop it in its tracks. We need to move ahead, and this is the best opportunity that I think that we have on the table. We're going to get the biggest bang for our buck. When you look at, you're talking about the monies, it's going to not only cost money, but it's going to change the entire way that we use the center district. It's going to change the infrastructure of the way that we look at, how we look at the campus atmosphere that we're trying to create. It's going to create new parking. It's going to create new buildings. It's gonna make other buildings have access. Today, we are looking across the street at almost an abandoned building. We have a building in the center of town that isn't even used. We used a cellar for WCTV, but other than that, it's not being used at all. So, I think that a vote today is gonna move the town in a better direction. It's gonna move us in a more positive direction, and I wish them luck in their endeavors, and that's all I can say. Thank you very much.
Mrs. West?
Hi. Karen West, 2 Birchwood Road. I've always been in favor of something for the library, and a lot of people that I've talked to want something. But is it necessarily an eleven-million-dollar library we want to go for? Do we really want to spend eight million dollars chasing three? Or could we get the same results by purchasing the building, the house, next to the current library, and adding on and coming up with many of the rooms that are in this project? I too have two small kids. I live in the Whitfield area. I did reject that building, not because so much of the location, but because I just don't think that we need to spend huge amounts of money to accomplish the same thing, especially when we're gonna be looking at needing, as Ray put out at one of the meetings, new substations. The high school is looking for a better facility for the high school kids that are gonna be there, you know, six, seven hours a day. People are coming into the community and looking at what we have to offer. I do agree with that. They're also looking at how much taxes we're spending. How much is it gonna cost me to live in this community in taxes? And everyone's running around saying, you know, "It's only, you know, seven dollars and fifty cents," or "How much it's gonna be?" But, again, and I hate to dwell on the senior citizens, because there's an awful lot of middle-aged people in the same boat that the senior citizens are in. We all have children. We have children that are getting ready to go to college, and that money is going to be needed. Our gas prices went up. I mean, my car, on average, I'm paying nine dollars more per week for gas, and they're talking about prices going up more. Nine dollars per week times four, thirty-six dollars a month. Adding on to that, seven fifty per month. Milk, such a small item, has gone up. How many gallons of milk do you go through in a week? Multiply that by a month, let's increase that. Oil prices have gone up. Everything is going up. One thing we can control is how much more our taxes are gonna go up. Now, Carl pointed out, I think he said, on his investment property, eight hundred dollars a year. On your, I'm sorry? All right, three. Your personal property was a couple of hundred dollars a year. He's not alone. It's not only him. It's all of us. All right? Mike said that, Mike McCoy said that, was it the West School Mike that isn't gonna be paid off until 2011? Is that what it was?
Public safety building.
Public safety, and, okay. Now, if we're gonna take out, say, a twenty-year loan, or however many-year loan we're gonna take out for this library, does that mean that we're gonna wait that long to work on a substation and to work on the high school? I mean, my kids, when they get to high school, what is that high school gonna need? What does it need today? And these kids are in there, six, seven hours a day.
Fifteen seconds.
They're not in the library that long. I urge everyone to let this bypass, and let's look at possibly doing an expansion to the current library. Thank you.
Mr. McDonnell?
Thank you. As I read the article, I observed that it's a special, specific request to authorize the application for state funds, not to figure out where Mr. Segal wants to live. But I have a few questions. What's disturbing to me is why it's specifically set for the Swain School Site. I hear people here who don't want a library. I hear people who want it at the Swain Site. Some people want it at the existing site. Why are we limiting it to the Swain School Site and not just getting the funds and then deciding?
Mr. Crier?
Yeah, it's part of the requirements of the grant, as I indicated a little earlier, to identify the site, and the site went through a whole process, the site selection went through a whole process, and there was a vote, vote by the Board of Library Trustees and the Board of Selectmen, and we needed to do that in order to, again, be eligible for the grant. We had to come up with a specific site and a preliminary design.
What happens if we apply for these funds and we get them, and then the people at the meeting vote for a different site?
I don't believe that the people at the meeting are going to be, at this point, given, presented with a different site, because if we go forward, it will be based upon the architectural plans for this particular site. So, you know, it's pretty clear that the community has decided to go in this direction at this site. If people are opposed to that, they should vote against it, and then the process will start again. The grant funds are going to be driven by this vote, and the State Board of Library Commissioners are going to approve it based upon the preliminary plans that you've seen. So, if we reject that, then we won't get the funds. It's really pretty simple.
Why does the state care where we put the library? Why don't we get the funds, and then screw them, build it where we want it?
Mr. McDonnell, come on. I think it's very clear that there's a site-specific requirement to get the grant funds. I think everybody else is pretty clear on that. Thank you. Representative Micali?
Yes. I'm not trying to influence the vote here today, but to elaborate on the reimbursement program. Currently, there are forty-one communities competing. Currently, there's about six-odd million dollars, about six-and-a-half million dollars in that account. It's subject to appropriation. Right now, there's a bond issue pending. It hasn't made it through the process for seventy-five million, so that money has not been appropriated yet. There will be money probably in the budget, but that has not been appropriated yet anyway. Forty-one communities competing. Right now, the hard, fast dollars in that appropriation, dollars that you can spend, is seven million dollars. Just to give you a more clear, concise picture of what the financial picture looks like on the state level. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Moderator Stewart. My name is Robert Hayes. I live at 19 Thurston Ave, and this is my first town meeting. For the record, my car is currently parked in the lower parking lot at the library as we speak. While I've worked at the Wilmington Memorial Library for a little over four years now, I want to make it clear that I rise in support of Article 26 as a private citizen and not as a town employee. For any of you who read a letter to the editor in the March 17th edition of the Town Crier entitled, "It's Not All About the Joneses At All," some of this will sound familiar to you. And if anyone wants to fact-check me, as Mrs. Sullivan would say, "Bring it on," and the following numbers come primarily from a Massachusetts Public Library data-featured report entitled, "Library Facilities Report FY 2003." And this report can be accessed from the Massachusetts Board of Library Commissioners website. Compared to neighboring towns and cities, communities similar in population, and fellow members of the Merrimack Valley Library Consortium, Wilmington has one of the most inadequate library buildings of them all, and this is not an exaggeration. Let's first talk about our neighboring cities and towns. Excluding Woburn, every city and town neighboring Wilmington has upgraded their facilities, whether through renovation, expansion, or new construction, since our library opened over thirty-five years ago. Andover did it in 1988, Billerica in 1999, Burlington in 96, North Reading in 91, Reading in 83, and Tewksbury, of course, 99. And like Wilmington, Woburn plans on applying for a 2004, 2005 Massachusetts Public Library construction grant. Also, every city and town neighbor in Wilmington, including Woburn, has a larger library. Andover, fifty-five thousand square feet, Billerica, forty thousand, Burlington, twenty-nine thousand, North Reading, twenty-five thousand four sixteen, Reading, thirty thousand one hundred, Tewksbury, thirty-five thousand seven fifty, and Woburn, eighteen thousand three eighty-six. So, here are some comparisons to our approximately fifteen-thousand-square-foot library. Andover's library is more than three-and-a-half times larger than ours. Billerica is more than two-and-a-half times larger than ours. Burlington is a little less than two times the size of ours. Reading is more than two times larger than ours, and Tewksbury is nearly two-and-a-half times larger than ours. Next, let's talk about communities similar in population, and this is probably the key one. In terms of building size, Wilmington has the second-smallest library in Massachusetts communities with a population of nineteen thousand to twenty-five thousand. We are number twenty-three out of twenty-four. In terms of upgrading facilities, whether through new construction, renovation, or expansion, Massachusetts communities, I'm sorry, Wilmington is third-to-last in Massachusetts communities with a population of nineteen thousand to twenty-five thousand. We are number twenty-two out of twenty-four. The only two towns that are behind us, Belmont and Woolpool, also plan on applying for 2004, 2005 Massachusetts Public Library construction grants. And finally, let's talk about members of our consortium. Since the Wilmington Memorial Library opened in 1969, every member of the Merrimack Valley Library Consortium, with one exception, other than us, has either expanded, renovated, or built a new library. In other words, Wilmington is second-to-last in its consortium in terms of upgrading its facilities. We are ranked thirty-fourth out of the thirty-five MVLC libraries. Now, it's difficult to put into words just how far we've fallen behind. To summarize, we're either last, second-to-last, or third-to-last in the aforementioned five categories. I can't reiterate enough that compared to our seven neighboring cities and towns, twenty-three Massachusetts communities similar in population, and thirty-four members of the Merrimack Valley Library Consortium, Wilmington's library is one of the most inadequate buildings of them all.
Ten seconds.
Okay. In closing, I urge residents today to vote yes on Article 26. After all, what's the harm in letting this eventually get, become a ballot question? This whole issue has become very contentious.
Time's up, sir.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I don't like cutting anyone off. That's my job, sir. Sorry. Mrs. Linehan?
I'd like to move the question.
Is there a second? I took it from the applause there was, but, okay. What Mrs. Linehan is asking is that we end debate and give, if the maker of the motion so chooses, up to ten minutes to address the body. So, if you want to end debate and potentially give the maker of the motion that time to address the body, you want to vote yes. If you want to continue open debate, you vote no. Okay? Everybody ready? I'd ask everyone along the walls, you need to take a seat to vote. This requires a two-thirds. I'm gonna try a voice vote on this motion, and then we'll definitely be counting the vote on the actual motion, okay? So, those in favor of ending debate signify by saying aye.
Aye!
Those opposed say no. Voted. The maker of the motion, Ms. Campbell, if you should so choose, you have up to ten minutes to address the body.
I certainly won't take ten minutes. A vote yes will simply allow the town manager, the trustees, and the library staff to move forward with the grant process. A yes vote today will not raise taxes. If we do not move forward with a new library right now, the earliest we could next expect to build would be 2014. I have a fourth grader, that means he would be nineteen at that time. This proposal has been the result of enormous amounts of work in collecting community input, hosting public forums, meetings with the various committees and the Selectmen. This proposal would give Wilmington an opportunity to bring a new library, a vastly improved library, a community center, to the residents of Wilmington.
Thank you. Before we take the, before we take the vote, I just want to ask, are there any non-voters sitting anywhere other than the last two rows on this side? If you are, I need to ask you to please go to the back two rows, whether you're a town official, employee, whatever. I need to make sure that I'm comfortable with this vote. I'm gonna let the children stay where they are, okay? Okay. Tell us, take your places. I assume by now you're all comfortable what we're voting on. I hope so. Tell us, ready? All those in favor of Article Number 26 as presented signify by rising at your place. Thank you. May be seated. All those opposed to Article 26 as presented signify by rising at your place. Thank you. The vote is as follows, 217 in the affirmative, 176 in the negative, motion passes.[629.12][629.12](APPLAUSE).
Move to reconsider.
Oh, excuse me?
Move to reconsider.
Where's it, motion to reconsider?
Yes.
Is there a second? Second motion is made to reconsider and seconded. It's in order, hold on one second. Sir, could I just ask how you voted on the article?
I voted in the affirmative.
You voted yes, okay. Then the motion is in order. Motion's made and seconded, in order, discussion. We need to keep the discussion to why we should reconsider.
I believe we should reconsider, just to make sure that we did reconsider at this time and not a later time. In case, you know, so we have the same votes that we have here, and the same people can participate.
Okay, further discussion? We're ready for the vote. Let me try to explain this if I can. The motion has been made to reconsider.
For discussion?
Yeah, one second. Ready, if I could explain it. You only get one opportunity to reconsider an article by the bylaws of the town of Wilmington. So this vote, if you vote either way, would, if you vote, if you want to reconsider this, you would vote in favor of this. If you don't want to reconsider, you vote against this. Either way, this would be the final vote at this meeting that we could have on this article. Okay, so everybody clear? No. Okay, so if you want to bring the article up again and discuss the library, this Article 26, all over again, and take the vote all over again, you vote in favor of it. If you don't want to do that, you vote no. Either way that vote goes, if it votes yes, we'll bring the whole article up again. If you vote no, that's the last discussion that we'll have today on this article. Okay, so it cannot be reconsidered again. You clear?
Yes.
Okay, discussion.
I'm just curious why we have to reconsider when we just had the vote five minutes ago.
His question was, why would we have to reconsider if we just took the vote? I think I, hopefully my explanation made that pretty clear, why. Further discussion? Yes, sir.
If, for some reason, that we let the, we didn't take this move to reconsider now, at any point while this, before the adjournment at this meeting, the motion to reconsider could be brought back up again. And that, you know, could be toward the end of the meeting, could be several hours from now. By doing the motion to reconsider, this means that this cannot come up later on after some of the people who may have voted in favor of this have left. And that's my interpretation of why someone would want to do this, and this is why I would want to do this.
Thank you. Okay, we clear? Okay, this requires a majority vote. Okay, all those, everybody clear on what we're voting on? So if you want to bring up the article, the issue, the discussion, and a new vote on the library, Article 26, vote yes. If you want to end the discussion on this for the whole day, this will be it, vote no. Okay? Clear? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no?
No.
On Article Number 20, I think if my count is right, we have eight left, ladies and gentlemen, so if you might want to stick in there, I think these ones may go quickly.
Excuse me?
Number 20.
Yes, sir. For what point of purpose do you rise?
Reconsider Article 32.
There's a motion to reconsider Article Number 32. How did you vote on Article 32, sir?
Negative.
In the negative, which is the prevailing side. Is there a second? Motion's made and seconded. Discussion.
Thank you for the opportunity for the reconsideration. I just felt I wasn't truly clear in the audience to not get a clear picture.
Okay, I just want to make sure, they haven't decided to do anything yet, okay? There's a motion on the floor to reconsider, the discussion is limited to why we should
After talking with many people in the room, there was some misclassification as to what my hopes were to do with this parcel of property. So with that, I asked to re-bring it to the floor and re-discuss so I can give a clearer picture of what me and my family's intentions are to do with this property.
Further discussion? Ms. Yurk?
Mr. Penny wants this to be reconsidered after my conversation with him about what his intent is from the planning board's perspective and from a resident of this town perspective. I need to be assured that all that Mr. Penny will ever be allowed to do is build one more home in conformity to all of Conservation Commission's rules and regulations and in conformity to what the planning board wants to do. As presented previously, what he was doing was giving himself the right to build three homes. We do not want that without further planning, without, we just don't want it. We just don't know enough. I want him bounded by his word that his intent is to build one more home in conformity with conservation and in conformity with planning board.
Given the opportunity by the town members, it'll be one house and one house only.
I don't know how we can be assured of that.
I just want to clarify that you can't. The zoning, rezoning a parcel of land, you rezone a parcel of land. I'm just pointing this out for clarification purposes, and someone can utilize that for whatever use you rezone it to. So the commitment to build one, two, three, four, five homes really is up to the word of the individual, but is not held as part of the rezoning.
What I truly suggested to Mr. Penny is that he have a discussion with the Planning Department Director. I did not suggest that he come to the town meeting body and ask for another consideration.
There's a, there's a, there's a motion on the floor, further discussion on why or why we should not reconsider. Mr. Costa.
Mr. Moderator, from past experiences being a planning board in conservation, they put a restriction on the fact of the matter, and I think that Mr. Penny is a man of his word. I don't think that his intentions are to build more than one home, again.
Mr. Costa, we're limited to, why should we reconsider?
Well, this is, this is the point I'm going to make. A lot of people in this room don't understand, there's restrictions put on these parcels. If they're restricting him only to one home, then he, Mr. Penny, I would actually ask you to put in writing to the planning director that you only build one home, a written document, saying only one. All right? I'll take you for your word.
It'll be a challenge to get that one, but I just want the opportunity.
Mr. McDonald? Is town council here, Mr. Stewart?
He is.
I have a question. I realize that you cannot limit Mr. Penny to building only one home, but would the council be able to give us some type of advice if Mr. Penny chose, at his own free will, to issue a letter in writing that is all he will build? I believe there are some people here that would vote for him.
Mr. Durencis, could you answer the question whether there is the ability to put something in writing that would limit the construction of certain houses on a rezoning article, or does a zoning article stand on its own?
The zoning article stands on its own, but I have seen in other cases where a property owner can file in the Registry of Deeds a deed restriction on the future use of his property before he comes to town meeting. But the action of the town will have to stand on its own based on the facts as they exist today.
Thank you.
Mr. Stewart, is he saying that there is absolutely no legal document that Mr. Penny can prepare right now that would bound him to one home if Mr. Penny so chooses to do that?
That's how I heard it, Mr. Durencis, is that correct?
Yes, it's correct.
This is correct, was his answer.
With that being said, though, if it was to be rezoned...
Excuse me, Mr. Penny, you don't have the floor. Further discussion? Yes, ma'am.
Julia Doten, Emerald Ave. I think that we should, right now we're voting on whether or not we can re-discuss Article 32.
That's correct. That's all we're voting on.
I'd like to be able to vote yes for that so that I can come up here and say something about what I was, have learned on this article since we last discussed it.
Thank you. Mr. Sorrentino.
I do not think this should come back onto the floor. We voted on this, it's been denied, and it has nothing to do with Mr. Penny, it has to do with the process. It's been voted, it's been denied, we should move on.
Further discussion? We ready for the vote? We're voting to reconsider Article Number 32. This requires a majority vote, even though the article itself required a two-thirds vote, okay? Everybody clear on what we're voting on? So if you want to re-discuss Article 32, vote yes. If you don't want to re-discuss it and you don't want it to come up again today, vote no. Okay? All those in favor of reconsidering Article 32 signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no.
No.
To see if the town will vote to amend the zoning bylaw and associated zoning map of the town of Wilmington by taking the following actions. One, amend Section 4.2 accessory apartments by deleting existing Section 4.2 and substituting the following provision. 4.2 accessory apartments. An accessory apartment is authorized as an accessory use in a single-family dwelling subject to the following conditions or do anything in relation thereto. Mr. Sorrentino.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the zoning bylaw of the town of Wilmington be amended by taking the following action. Amend Section 4.2 accessory apartments by deleting existing Section 4.2, which currently reads as follows. Accessory apartments. An accessory apartment is authorized as an accessory use in a single-family dwelling existing for five years from the date of initial occupancy, subject to the following conditions. And substitute the following. 4.2 accessory apartments. An accessory apartment is authorized as an accessory use in a single-family dwelling subject to the following conditions.
I'll accept that as a main motion. All you've added is how the wording exists today in the bylaw, and the wording of what you want to change it to is the same. Great. Thank you. Is there a second? Motion's made and seconded. Finance Committee recommendation? Is approval? Planning Board recommendation? Is approval. Discussion. We're ready for the vote? We'll try a voice vote. All those in favor of Article 20 as presented signify by, is there discussion?
Edward Loud, a member of the Board of Appeals, we were not brought into any discussion about this, and I think that we should vote this down, similar to Article 19. This has just taken more, given the builders more rights that we don't need in this town. Thank you.
Further discussion? Mr. Segal.
Yes, I have a question for the planning board. Does this, does this change, indicate that it will no longer go before the Board of Appeals, or does it just take out the five-year provision?
Just takes out the five-year provision.
So simply put, as I understand it, you can apply for an accessory apartment in your, to be added to your home if your home is five years or older currently, and this is providing that you go through the exact same process, but you can do it on a house that is less than five years old?
That's correct.
Thank you very much for that clarification. Yes, ma'am.
Hi, Sharon Kelly Perella. Can you hear me? Can you hear this? Sharon Kelly Perella, 145 Chester Street, Wilmington. I've been very pro for this for a long time. Originally, it was anything not built before 1992, after 92. Got together with many people in the town, we changed it to a five-year provision. I can't tell you in my business, which I'm in real estate, how many people in this community want to stay in this community, whether it's to have an accessory apartment for their family, their mother, their children who are just getting married, who have kids and want to save money. I'm all for this. It's about time we took out the restriction of time in it. It doesn't matter whether it's new construction or whether it's an existing home, they still have to follow the same rules, they still have to go to the Board of Appeals. I'm all for this. Thank you.
Mr. McDonald.
Yes, thank you. Contrary to what Mr. Lord said, this is not a developer article, it's not a developer issue, it's not a builder article or issue. This is an issue that involves families who may need to support somebody who may be handicapped, maybe elderly. There is absolutely no logic behind the timeframe on that. You're going to make somebody, you know, become homeless until five years from now? It's ridiculous. This is, this is actually one of the few things that I actually think the planning board did good. Thank you.[1572.04][1572.04](LAUGHTER).
Representative Misselli.
Yes, I have a question for the planning board. How do you restrict parking? We all want to do something like, I don't mean I want to do it in my home, but we all want to do something like this, but you've got cars now, we've converted some of these to accessory apartment use, you've got homes with seven or eight automobiles. How do you restrict it? What kind of a cap do you put on it? You know, we give this at a town meeting, and we don't always follow up on what the consequences are going to be.
Ms. Hamilton or Mr. Sorrentino?
I guess I'm a little confused, Mr. Misselli. What's the question? You're telling someone they can't have a car? I don't know.
Is there, is there a limit or a restriction on number of cars, I guess is the question?
Um, no, no, there is not. In the current bylaws, there is not.
Thank you. Representative?
Yeah, I thought it was very clear and concise. Evidently, you had a problem.
I guess I did.
That is, that is the way I'm putting it. Where do you put all of the automobiles? And that's a clear, concise question.
Mr. Sorrentino.
It's not for me to determine where all the automobiles go. The idea of, the idea of taking away the five-year restriction is to, is to increase the ability to have flexibility in housing. That's the idea.
Further discussion? Anyone who hasn't spoken? Mr. Loud or Mrs. Linehan?
On this particular article, we, I would like to have some input from the planning board. I believe that what they have done with apartments here in town, the accessory apartments, it has gotten us to a point of 9% that we've met for affordable housing, and we have a two-year moratorium now because of that. If we have these accessory apartments, we will continue to stay within the framework that no more of the affordable housing projects can come in. Could I have an answer from Ms. Hamilton perhaps on that?
Ms. Hamilton.
This, the accessory apartment bylaw in Wilmington doesn't have any effect on the affordable housing count. It does offer an alternative form of housing, it offers more diversity, it doesn't actually add to our 40B count.
Does she? Anyone who hasn't spoken? Ms. Sullivan?
I had a couple of questions. One of the questions is, is there a restriction in new construction for the diamers of accessory apartments? It would, it would be the same? And can someone tell me why the zoning Board of Appeals was not included in any of this
Ms. Hamilton.
I can answer that question.
In both instances, the recommendation for this article and for the Hammerhead Loud article came from the building inspector.
Further discussion? Mr., Ms. Segal have spoken on this, correct? Mr. Costa.
Steve Costa, 120 Faulkner, a member of the Master Plan Committee. I remember a few years back, we had some discussions about housing, housing needs in the community and identifying certain zonings for mixed use in accessory apartments. The discussions that we took place about accessory apartments... The discussions that we took place about accessory apartments were to provide for some elderly, family members that are relatively old to live on their own, people, you know, that just couldn't afford their homes, and they were able to bring in, you know, bring their parents up and out of their house and bring them into theirs. But to restrict certain regulations is kind of ludicrous in my book. If you're going to restrict something, then you might as well not have anything. I mean, I've heard affordable housing come up, where we're going to be on relief for two years of 40B. That has nothing to do with this, this particular, um, language of bylaw. What it has to deal with is, it has to deal with, are we, are we able to have accessory apartments in Wilmington, and are we going to restrict certain avenues down there? I, I'm in favor of accessory apartments. I think it's a great idea. Doesn't help the fact of affordable housing or anything in that. Thank you.
Ms. Stevenson?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Martha Stevenson, 7 Chandler Road. I guess in, um, full disclosure, I have to say, I'm currently serving, uh, the end of an associate's term on the Board of Appeals. I just wanted to provide some additional information, uh, to Mr. Misselli's question and Mr. Sorrentino's response with parking. It's my understanding that the proposed bylaw would not change some of the other parameters of Section 4.2 of the zoning bylaw, and those do include a provision that accessory apartments should include a minimum of one additional parking space, and that there shall be no more than one driveway or curb cut, providing access to the, the residents. There's no maximum number of cars. There's no limit on the maximum, but there is a minimum. Thank you.
Further discussion? Mr. Loud?
For the record, my name's Ed Loud, not Lord. I'm for accessory apartments. What I'm nervous about is new construction. Every house in town can have an accessory apartment. Is that what this town wants? I'm not sure. Do we want single families, two families, three families? Do we want this open cart, cart planche for the, for the building inspector to let every apartment, everyone have a accessory apartment? Or do we want to have some control over it by the citizens? With the Board of Appeals. Thank you.
Mr. Segal.
Carl Segal, 7 Lawrence Court. For the benefit of those that may not know, um, the last three speakers was, was an associate member of the Board of Appeals, a regular member of the Board of Appeals, another associate member of the Board of Appeals. Uh, as far as process is concerned, it, it might be nice if we get information about these changes to the zoning bylaws before we arrive at this building, and some of these questions might be resolved. That notwithstanding, as I understand what is in the pink book and what is in our zoning bylaw, I believe that what we're, uh, I, I'm firmly against removing the public hearing process for accessory apartments. I'm firmly against that. However, I don't see that this particular article, as it is written, and my understanding of it within the last few minutes that I've been perusing both books, I believe the only thing that I see in this, and I would like a further reiteration of this, is a change in the time delay to be able to put in an accessory apartment, not a change in the process. I also should further disclose, in full disclosure, that not only am I on the, uh, an associate member of the Board of Appeals, I'm also on the Master Plan Committee, and the Master Plan Committee did discuss this very, um, topic of removing the five-year, um, waiting period before you can add an accessory apartment to your new house. So both boards were kind of involved in that. Thank you.
Ms. Hamilton?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Uh, they also, uh, discussed the Hammerhead Lot provision as well. There was a public hearing on these articles on March 15th, 2005. It wasn't today that anybody got these warrant articles for the first time. There has been public hearing about the issue. The, um, Board of Appeals still has special permit authority. No one is suggesting that that be taken away. The only change to this bylaw is removing the five-year waiting period on construction of an accessory apartment in a house. The Board of Appeals still has all of its power to set conditions on the property that comes before it, requesting a special permit.
Mr. Kira.
I just want to echo one thing that Mrs. Hamilton said. The suggestion that there was not proper notification is just plain wrong. Uh, not only, you know, and I, and I know the members of the Board of Appeals, and none of them are bashful about forthcoming, uh, you know, in terms of not being forthcoming about what, uh, is under their jurisdiction or what is not. I'm very surprised to learn that they would just learn about this today, given the fact that it was advertised in the newspapers, given the fact that there was a public hearing on it, given the fact that it's been published for, um, over six weeks in certain publications, and that everybody received at, at their residence this Finance Committee booklet, um, probably about, uh, two and a half to three weeks ago. So to suggest that we're just hearing about this now is not, is not correct. The fact is, when I looked at the entire warrant, I thought this was among the, as they say, no-brainers. All we're saying is the process doesn't change, except if you happen to live in Wilmington in a house that was built, um, three years ago, and something happens to one of your loved ones, where you need to now provide for them, we're taking out this silly rule that says you've got to wait two years before you can help them. That's what this does. It simply takes out a silly rule.
Further discussion? Mr. McDonald?
Yes. After listening to members of the Board of Appeals, I've come to the conclusion that what they're looking for is just more control and more ability to stymie the efforts of needy people, and I hope that people support this article. Thank you.
Ms. Sullivan?
I just want to state that, um, I think part of the confusion, and I noticed this about the way that the articles were written this year, and I think that if they were written a little differently, um, I think that's what part of the confusion is, because when you look at these articles, and if you were not able to go to the public hearing, there wasn't another public forum where you could discuss it. Uh, but the articles talk about deleting sections, but they don't describe the sections that they're deleting. So it's difficult for people just to look at, at this and say, and, uh, understand. It, it identifies the sections that are going to be replaced, but it doesn't identify the actual sections to be deleted. And I think that's where some of the confusion comes in here, and I would recommend, so that this doesn't happen again, and there isn't more confusion, that it be done the way it used to be done and not done this way. Thank you.
Mr. Moderator.
Representative Misselli.
Yeah. All of these apartments aren't given because of a hard, uh, aren't utilized because of a hardship. In every instance where you have these accessory apartments, the folks who implement the accessory apartments aren't always doing it because someone died, or someone got divorced, or, uh, something else happened. They're just creating, basically, a two-family home. And you can drive through this community. You know, it isn't a no-brainer. There's a lot more involved. These aren't all hardships. There's no restriction on parking, so they create another hardship. Thank you.
Ms. Stevenson?
I just want to clarify for the record that I am in support of this article. Thank you.
We ready for the vote?
Yep.
This does require a two-thirds. I'd ask the tellers to take their places. I've heard discussion on both sides of this. All those in favor of Article 20 as presented signify by rising at your place. Those opposed to Article Number 20 as presented signify by rising at your place. Voters as follows, 134 in the affirmative, 32 in the negative. Motion passes with the required two-thirds. To see if the town will vote to designate the Wilmington High School track as a lasting tribute to Francis P. Kelly by naming said track in his honor in recognition of his many years of dedicated service to the students and athletes of Wilmington High School or do anything in relation thereto. Mr. Bork.
Motion to vote?
If you just say, I moved at the town vote?
I moved at the town vote.
Great, thank you. And does your motion continue as is in the booklet?
It does.
I'll accept that as the main motion. Is there a second? Motion's made in second. If Finance Committee recommendation is approval. Discussion. Mr. Bork.
Uh, I don't, uh, I don't think I need to spend very much time up here. I think that just about anybody who would be interested in voting on this already knows, uh, Mr. Kelly very well. Um, the outpouring of support that I've gotten has been overwhelming virtually, and I haven't had any indication that there'd be opposition to this article. Um, I do want to explain, however, Mr. Kelly's absence today. He told me, uh, number one, that he does have a track meet today, so he couldn't be here. But number two, he said he's going to be, be very embarrassed, and he said if he was to stand here, if he was to be here during the vote, he'd have to stand in opposition to it. So I, for one, appreciate his not being here. That's it.
Thank you. Further discussion? We're ready for the vote? We're voting on Article 27. Those in favor of Article 27 signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. Voted and done so unanimously. I don't usually comment on articles, but now that this one has been voted, I spoke to Mr. Kelly last night, and he felt, um, he felt badly that he couldn't be here, and, um, I've known Mr. Kelly a long time, and he's a dear friend, and I can't, um, think of anyone more deserving of an honor like this than Frank Kelly. And I hope that the teachers and coaches of today's era take a lesson from Frank Kelly and treat the students and the athletes the way that he did. What a wonderful man, and what a wonderful tribute, and a wonderful deserving tribute. Mr. Kelly, if you're watching the tape later on, congratulations and thank you for everything. And please don't tell anyone I get emotional, it will wreck my reputation. Article Number 33. To see if the town will vote to amend the Wilmington zoning ordinance with respect to that portion of land located at 124 Salem Street, Map 83, Parcel 16, and presently split zone for Residence 60 and Residence 20, by changing it to Residence 20 or do anything in relation thereto. Is there a motion? Uh, Ms. Griffin, I think was the first name on the petition. Is there a motion, sir?
I moved at the town vote.
In your name, sir, just for the record?
Uh, Louis Piazza.
Are you a...
I'm actually representing the, um, the owner of the property.
Okay, and you're a, you're a Wilmington voter?
Uh, I'm actually, I'm a resident of Andover.
Okay, I need someone that is a resident of Wilmington to make the motion, sir. That is a voter of Wilmington. Mr. Enos, sir?
I wanted to vote.
I move, okay. In your name, sir?
124 Salem Street, Anthony Cudia.
Okay. And, uh, is, does your motion go as is contained in the booklet?
Yes.
Yes, I'll accept that as the main motion. Is there a second? Motion's made in second. If Finance Committee recommendation is approval. Planning Board recommendation is approval. Discussion. Mr. Piazza.
Sure, thank you. Uh, we're just seeking this amendment so that we can, uh, pursue the possible construction of a residential dwelling. Um, I've had family that lived, lived in Wilmington for about 30 years. My wife has been a resident for 15 years. Uh, we are now in the town of Andover, but we'd like the opportunity to raise our kids in this town. Thank you.
Further discussion? We're ready for the vote? Try a voice vote. We're on voting on Article Number 33. Those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no.
No.
Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. Tellers, take your places, please. This requires two-thirds. I'm pretty certain on this, but, uh, I don't want to take any chances on a two-thirds All those in favor of Article 33 signify by rising at your place. All those opposed signify by rising at your place. The voters as follows, 145 in the affirmative, six in the negative. Motion passes with the required two-thirds. We're on Article Number 22. To see if the town will vote to amend the zoning bylaw and associated zoning map of the town of Wilmington by taking the following action. One, amend Section 6.8.6 procedure for a special permit in site plan review by deleting the phrase "Section 8.5" and substituting the phrase "Section 10.5". Two, amend Section 6.8.7.2 criteria for granting special permit by deleting the phrase "Section 8.5" and substituting the phrase "Section 10.5" or do anything in relation thereto. Mr. Sorrentino.
Yes, Mr. Moderator. I move that the zoning bylaw of the town of Wilmington be amended by taking the following actions. One, amend Section 6.8.6 procedure for a special permit in site plan review by deleting the phrase "Section 8.5" and substituting the phrase "Section 10.5". And two, amend Section 6.8.7.2 criteria for granting a special permit by deleting the phrase "Section 8.5" and substituting the phrase "Section 10.5".
Is there a second? Motion's made in second. If Finance Committee recommendation is approval. Planning Board recommendation is approval. Mr. Segal.
This information also was generated by an associate member of the Board of Appeals and sent on to other people. It's simply a matter of correcting a, an inaccurate reference within the zoning book. And, uh, I'll speak personally and say that I suggest that we get it done. I think it's, makes the zoning book more, uh, accurate. Thank you.
Further discussion? Yes, sir?
Thanks, Mr. Moderator. Frank Dodge, 61 Chestnut Street. I notice you did an excellent job today in making all the speakers adhere to the five-minute rule. I commend you for that. I think it's a good rule, and I think it should be extended to include visual aids as well. I know the visual aid for the library...
Yeah, we're on, we're on Article 22, sir.
Oh, excuse me.
But I will state, just for the record, that the visual aid, the maker of a motion by the bylaw that was passed last year gets 10 minutes, and Ms. Stewart used nine minutes and 52 seconds, just to be clear. Okay? Because I gave her the 15-second warning.
I'm saying the visual aid was up there for an hour and 20... I'm saying the visual aid was up there for an hour and 26 minutes. The picture of the library, which we all knew what we were voting on. I think it was a subliminal message.
Point taken.
Thank you.[1282.15][1282.15](Laughter).
Okay, further discussion? For Article 22, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. Voted and done so unanimously. To see if the town will vote to authorize the selectmen to enter in agreement, the terms of which shall be as determined by the selectmen to sell, convey, or otherwise dispose of all or part of the following described parcels, following a determination made by the town manager that the, that the, and is not, that the land is not needed for any municipal purpose in accordance with Chapter 3, Section 16 of the bylaws of the inhabitants of the town of Wilmington revised and other applicable law. The parcel located on Sanborn Street, described in the assessors' records as map 24 parcel 201A, or do anything in relation thereto. Mr. Lassar?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I move, Roger Lassar, 9 Border Ave. I move that the town vote to authorize the selectmen to enter an agreement.
And Mr. Lassar, does your motion read as is contained in the booklet?
It does.
It does, I'll accept that as the main motion. Is there a second? Motion's made and seconded. Has the town manager made a determination of surplus on this property, Mr. Kira?
Yes, I have, Mr. Moderator. We've determined that it's surplus of the needs of the town.
Thank you. And Mr. Moynihan, has the assessors' office come up with a fair market value for this property?
The Board of Assessors has determined the fair market value to be $2,180.
So, Mr. Lassar, would you be okay with inserting the amount of $2,180 into the main motion?
Yes, I would.
I'll accept that as the main motion. Finance Committee recommendation is approval. Planning Board recommendation is approval. Discussion, Mr. Lassar?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I'm just, I'm just looking to see if I could purchase the small piece of parcel that's alongside of my property. If you look on page 70, in the, in the booklet, on page 37, that the, the small parcel is kind of a budding Sanborn Street. When I bought the house 27 years ago, the previous owner had to, through Land Court, abandon Sanborn Street because of the way the, the road actually, this paper street went through the house. Right now, on that side of my property is the, is an old cesspool, and I have to upgrade my prop, my septic tank and put a whole new septic system in. The other side of my property, if you know where Border Ave is, it's the last street in Wilmington, just before you hit Woburn, we don't have town water. The three lonely homes on that road are all on well. And I just put a well in not too many years ago on the other side of my property, and the engineer stated that the, I only have a few options of putting a new septic system in. One is to get town water, which is not an option at this point. The other is to move my well because of the 100-foot that you need from the well to a septic system. And having just put that well in not that many years ago, and it's 710 feet deep, that doesn't seem to be much of an option. So I'm looking to purchase this small 2,100 square foot of property so I could expand my septic system on that side. I would appreciate your vote. Thank you.
Further discussion? Mr. Costa?
Mr. Lassar, through you, Mr. Moderator, Mr. Lassar. I thought there was an agreement between Miller Landscaping in the town at the time that we approved, that we approved the project over there on Main Street, that he would extend the water line down to Mr. Lassar's area of town. Is that true?
The water main is in back on Old Main Street before, right at the end of Jimmy's garage property. So it would have to go, from my understanding, from the water department, from that point across Main Street, or down the rest of Old Main Street, across 38, and down onto 38. And they're not about to do that at this point.
All right, thank you.
Further discussion? We're ready for the vote? This requires two-thirds. We'll try a voice vote. Those in favor of Article 31 is presented, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. Voted and done so unanimously.
Thank you.
To see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate, transfer from available funds or borrow pursuant to any applicable statute the sum of $750 each, a total of $2,250, for the purpose of renewing under the authority of section 9 of chapter 40 of the general laws as amended, the lease of, A, Veterans of Foreign Wars Clubhouse for the purpose of providing suitable headquarters for the New Ellsworth Post 2458 of the Veterans of Foreign Wars of the United States; B, Marine Corps League in Wilmington for the purpose of providing suitable headquarters for the Wilmington chapter; C, the American Legion Clubhouse, Inc. in Wilmington for the purpose of providing suitable headquarters for the Wilmington Post 136 of the American Legion, or do anything in relation thereto. Mr. West?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I move that $750 each, a total of $2,250, be raised and appropriated from the fiscal year '06 tax levy and other general revenues of the town be spent by the town manager for the purpose of renewing under the authority of section 9, chapter 40 of the general laws as amended.
In favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. For Article Number 14. To see if the town will vote to authorize or reauthorize, as the case may be, revolving accounts pursuant to Mass General Law, Chapter 44, Section 53E12, for the various boards, commissions, departments, and agencies of the town, or do anything in relation thereto. Ms. Sullivan?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I move that the town vote to reauthorize the following revolving accounts pursuant to MGL, Chapter 44, Section 53E and a half, as follows. First, a compost bin revolving fund with an established spending limit of $4,500, with the source of revenues being the sale of composting bins. The spending authority being the town manager, and the purpose for which money may be spent is the purchase of composting bins. And a second revolving fund, the subsurface sewage disposal upgrade revolving fund, with an established spending limit of $200,000, with the source of revenues being betterment receipts and other loan repayments from property owners participating in said program. The purpose of expenditures being the repea and upgrade of subsurface sewage disposal systems, and the repayment to the Massachusetts Water Pollution Abatement Trust of any funds advanced to the town for this purpose, and the spending authority being the Board of Health with approval of the town manager.
Is there a second? Motion's made and seconded. Finance Committee recommendation is approval. The amounts are $4,500 for the compost bin revolving fund, and $200,000 for the subsurface sewage disposal upgrade revolving fund. Those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. Voted. That concludes the warrant articles for the 2005 Annual Town Meeting. Ladies and gentlemen, I want to thank everyone for your participation. I think we may have actually set a record today, 3:20.[1766.83][1766.83](Applause). So hopefully you enjoy the rest of the day. Motion to adjourn? Is there a second? Motion's made and seconded. Those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. Voted, done so unanimously. Enjoy the rest of the day, ladies and gentlemen.